Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to welcome you to the August 18th meeting of the Placer County Board of Supervisors. Nice to see you all here this morning. We're going to go ahead and get started with our flag slip this morning. Go ahead by Supervisor Holmes. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Supervisor Holmes. And now our board clerk will please read the statement of meeting procedures.
Welcome to the Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting of Tuesday, August 18th, 2015. Agendas are available on the wall outside this meeting room. If you are here to speak on an issue not appearing on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker. The board is not permitted to take action on items addressed under public comment. When you speak, clearly state your name and address for the record. All items on the agenda will be open for the public to address before final action is taken. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker, which will be monitored by a timer on the podium. If there is a person speaking on behalf of a group with no other testimony from another member of the group, please identify yourself as such, and your time may be extended at the pleasure of the board. Keep in mind, the chairman has the discretion of limiting the total discussion time on any item. If you are hearing impaired, we have listening devices available. It is requested that all cell phones be turned off or put in silent mode. Thank you for your participation and cooperation.
Thank you. Before we move on, just want to point out that on Friday, consistent with our noticing laws, two items were added in a supplemental agenda. One, a department item, a letter of support authorizing the chair to sign a letter of support of the United States Auburn Indian Communities Amendment Travel Gaming Compact with the State of California. And the other, a closed-session item. So those of you that might have printed your agenda at home and might not have the supplemental, there are two additional items on our agenda for our board's consideration today. With that, we will move on to the consent agenda. Any members of the board have any items they'd like removed from consent at this time? Seeing none, any members of the public have any items on consent they would like to remove for discussion? Do we have a motion on consent?
Motion.
We have a motion, Montgomery, second Duran. Roll call, please.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Duran?
Yes.
Wiegant?
Yes.
Euler?
Aye. Supervisor Holmes temporarily absent. Thank you very much. We will move on to public comments. Any members of the public wish to address the board at this time on any items not on our agenda, knowing that the board cannot take action on any items raised under public comment? As you step forward, please take a moment to identify yourself and let us know where you're from.
Hi, Eric Hill, and my address is 3700 Country Menno Court in Auburn. I'm representing the Auburn Senior Center. I'm the board president. And I wanted to just let you know that we're all moved out of DeWitt, and we're moved in a new facility at 550 High Street in Auburn. I wanted to thank the Facility Services Department for all of their help, especially Lori Morris and Eric Findley. Jim, I wanted to thank you and your staff, Leah and Ruth at the beginning, for your support. I also wanted to thank the county for the financial support. That was greatly appreciated. As you know, we would have preferred to have moved to North Auburn and had a site picked in North Auburn, and had good support from all of the county offices for that, except for the building department. And we went through a form of hell with the building department and never were able to come up with a satisfactory solution, and the landlord finally walked away from it. The situation with the building department is that their expectations were that the building would have to meet all the requirements that it would have had to meet if it was a new building. And every time we submitted the plans, we were -- they added more items that they hadn't picked up the last time. And so we submitted four times, and every time we got nine pages of stuff back. So we were not making any progress whatsoever. The building department subs the stuff out to an outfit in Roseville, and they have no motivation to finish these because they make more money the longer the process takes. By the way, just as a note, when we submitted our plans for where we are now to the city, they were approved the first time through with no problems. So I just wanted to make you aware of that situation. If you're interested in getting people to move to North Auburn or to the county, the process needs to be improved. And by the way, this wasn't just my experience. I've shared it with other people, and they've all said the difference between the county and the city is like night and day. So I think that's something that needs to be addressed. But to end it on a positive note, we're moved in, we're all set, everything's great, we're happy, and again, thanks for your support.
Thank you.
Good morning. Greg Hagwer, general manager, Placer County Fair Association, 800-All-America-City Boulevard, Roseville, California, 95 -- no, 9 -- whatever the zip code of Roseville.
Thank you, 95678.
Yeah, 5678, that's it. I'm here just to give the board supervisors an update on the recent county fair and also the Fourth of July. Thank you very much for the opportunity. The 2015 Placer County Fair started off hot. It was hot. It was one hot fair, let me tell you. For the first two days, it was 105 degrees. They said that it was the hottest days in June in 121 years. Just make a fair day, yeah. Saturday and Sunday were much better. They came in in the mid-'90s. Our attendance was three times as much as it was on Thursday and Friday, and the fair ran smooth all four days with no major incidents. We did have a few scratches, a few cuts, and one bee sting. I would like to compliment the Placer County Sheriff's Department. Absolutely, in my 40 years of working fairs, the best police force on any fairgrounds. They were cooperative, helpful, and Johnny-on-the-spot the whole run. We rearranged the fair layout by adding six new carnival rides. Also, we swung the carnival around to run the distance of Sunset Boulevard. If you're familiar with the fairgrounds, it used to just go straight back, and we kind of blocked it in. We added a lot of new activities on Speedway Road, so there's a big square in the center of the fairgrounds, and our objective was to get people to move around that square, so you see livestock, Raceway, Carnival, and the Midway. We increased food stands by 25%. Commercial booths were about the same. We had the addition because the theme was about Placer County, no place like Placer, and so we used Loopy Hall with the help of Renee Berg and Maura Rowe. We brought in a lot of different types of activities and entities in all about Placer County, and that was really well received. Our biggest events were the Pacific Race Challenge on Saturday and the Mexican Rodeo on Sunday, and overall, all the events were very well received. Our junior livestock auction grossed just under $180,000. All that money goes to our young exhibitors. We had 1,836 entries, 416 exhibitors, 207 divisions, and 14 judges. So far, the gross revenue -- I say "so far" because things are still dribbling in. Gross revenue of the fair was just under $190,000. Our expenses are --
That's all right, go ahead.
Our expenses were about $120,000. We're still making adjustments, but we're hopefully coming in the black. Our pageant went very well with Ms. Placer County being Virgie Vasquez. Ms. Teen is Kathleen Moore, and Minimus was Lindsey Jagger. To wrap up, our Fourth of July event actually doubled from last year with the sponsorship of the City of Roseville, offering fireworks. And our gross last year was $3,700. This year it was $7,294 with expenses of $134,000. Excuse me, I'd also like to thank the county for their support and sponsorship for the fair. Any questions?
Thank you. Let's just, if you would please, go back on -- you just said on the Fourth that your revenue was about $7,000, but your expenses were $134,000?
No, I'm sorry. $1,347.
Thank you, that's what -- yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it was actually, we made a little over $7,000.
Good, all right, all right, good, very good, Greg. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Any more members have any questions to Greg before he runs away? Greg, thank you very much. I enjoyed the fair this year, as always. It was very well-run. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Peter Epstein. I'm the principal of Placer High School, 275 Orange Street. I'm just here to thank you briefly, all of you, for the revenue sharing money you approved for Placer High School and the track. If you have some time and you want to go out in the hot weather, they're almost done. They've laid a couple layers, so it looks really good out there, and we have a lot of things moving forward. I specifically want to thank Supervisor Holmes, Supervisor Montgomery, for their continued support of Placer High School. Thank you.
Thank you. Right.
Good morning. Gary Mappa. I'm here speaking on behalf of myself, and a gentleman named Greg Zoller from Grass Valley, who's a homeless advocate, and from the Grass Valley Union, the reporter Jim Hemig.
Okay, Gary, let's just be clear. You're not here to address the homeless issue, which is going to be at 11 o'clock, right? Okay.
No, this is an invitation and a
Okay, great, thank you.
complimentary to the board.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we weren't jumping the gun on our 11 o'clock timed item.
This is the softer side of me.
Go for it.
Okay, first, before I get into the actual invitation, I want to quote from the Placer County Newsletter, August 6th, and it was, I'll be quoting David Bosch, "Homelessness is an issue we take seriously, and we continue to seek a long-term solution to address homelessness throughout the county. The county worked with community groups to provide a temporary homeless shelter nearby," and I'll pass through that. "The county continues to pursue a regional, public-private partnership approach based on recommendations of our nationally renowned consultant, Dr. Robert Marbut." So the complimentary part is, I want to thank the board for being innovative and being proactive in working toward issues that would reduce and minimize the impacts of homelessness, and as an incentive to what other areas are seeing happen in Placer County. Greg Zoller, an advocate, has met with Dr. Marbut, and they've actually set up a community town hall for September 10th, and that will be in Grass Valley. And attending that will be the several, my understanding is supervisors and different political entities, different nonprofit groups, and they will be discussing similar activities that have happened here in Placer County as a result of you inviting consultant Marbut. So with that, I have an invitation, or here's the press release that gives all the information. And this information is for the forthcoming town hall meeting with Marbut in Grass Valley and Nevada City, in Nevada County. Any questions?
I don't see any. Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Euler, members of the board, Jeff Brown, your Health and Human Services Director. Just like to take a moment this morning to introduce Tammy Moss Chandler over on my right. She is our new Assistant Department Director. She comes to us from Sonoma County, where she was the Assistant Health Agency Director. She also served stints as the Public Health Director in Merced County, and the First Five Director in Merced County and San Mateo County. So please join me in welcoming her to Placer County.
Okay. Anybody else wish to address the board on a public comment? All right, seeing none, we will move on to supervisor committee reports. Any board members have anything they'd like to report out for the good of the order here? All right. And we are right on time for our 9:15 timed item. This is Health and Human Services Adult System of Care. This is our annual report from our older adult advisory committee. Mr. Lewis, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Well, you're not Mr. Lewis, Maureen.
I'm not. I'm going to start.
I saw Eldon stand up after being admonished by Supervisor Holmes, I must say, earlier. He was quick to his feet this time, though, you said. Good morning, Maureen.
Good morning. So I just wanted to introduce this briefly. As you know, Placer County, California, and the nation are feeling the impacts of the growing aging of the baby boomers, including me. We're all getting older, and our numbers have impacted systems as we aged and are going to continue to impact systems. Health and Human Services, well, your board establishes Older Adult Advisory Commission in 2004, and I want to thank you for doing that. It's been a really helpful addition to our service system, and Health and Human Services does provide the staff support to that commission. I also have an introduction to do this morning. I'd like to introduce Cindy Bigby, who is sitting behind me. She is the new Older Adult Services Manager, and will actually be the staff personnel providing staff support to this board. So welcome to her. She was an internal promotion, was a supervisor in our system, and is now a manager. So always delighted when we have people that we can promote upward in our organization. Thank you. And we're very fortunate to have Eldon Lewis, former manager in the Adult System of Care, who's now chairing the Older Adult Advisory Commission. I just want to provide a very quick update. The last time Health and Human Services did a needs assessment in conjunction with the Older Adult Advisory Commission was in 2008. So we really believe it's time to do an updated needs assessment, and we will be looking at existing data and gathering data and really trying to update that effort, in the effort to make like a five-year plan for seniors in Placer County. We'll have particular focus on those seniors that would be hitting the safety net part of our system, and expect to complete that five-year plan in the next fiscal year. So I wanted to update the board that that is in process. And with that, your, what we're requesting this morning is that you receive the report from the Older Adult Advisory Commission, and I'll turn it over to Eldon to give a summary of the report.
Good morning, everybody. Chairman Euler, and members of the board, and CEO and county council, it's an honor to be before you again. It doesn't seem like it's been a year since we did this last time, but it has been, and as we get older, it may be true. My parents always said it would be, time would go faster. I didn't believe it then, but I do now. So we, again, it is an honor to be before you. As you will see by the report that we've given you in year 14, 15, the commission participated in a number of activities successfully, I might add. We continue to explore and review and report on issues, legislations, and needs and housing models for older adults in our county. Continued our activities to expand knowledge of the Older Adult Advisory Commission and get input. One of the things we did is, you all know us, speak to every one of the MACs in our county, which, and many of you were at some of those presentations, and it was a great experience to get out. And one of the things that we found, unless we happened to have a member of the commission on there, very few knew about our commission, so we felt that was an effort that was well-served by going and seeing them. Another thing that we accomplished, we continued our efforts in enhancing and expanding communication between the commission and the Board of Supervisors, who we serve, and our residents. One of the things that happened for a first time was the executive committee of the commission met with Supervisor Holmes and leadership of Health and Human Services, which went very well, and I thought was very helpful. Now we're facing a new year. As you've heard over and over again, and as soon as just a minute ago, we face some real challenges. I think the last time, I don't remember what the percentage of older adults over 60 in our community was the last time I was here, 30% of our adult population in this county is now over 60 years old. There are almost as many people over 60 as there are under 18. It's a huge shift in everything. So everything the commission will do in this coming year, as you see, we'll see from our report, relates directly to those changes in our demographics. We'll be exploring, researching, evaluating the needs of Placer County's older adult residents for housing resources, for other supports and services that they may require. We'll be continuing to speak to relevant groups, almost anybody that will listen to us, about our population changes and asking for their input and what they're seeing as the needs in our community. We'll be exploring the impact of these increasing, this increasing number of our population on the services we currently provide. The county provides, our nonprofit and private system provides what may need to be changed and how we might do things, not only differently, but what the requirements will be into the future. That population is expected to increase dramatically over the next few decades. So 30% for us now, I don't know what it'll be when we're back here again next year, but it will be more. There's no doubt about it. Well, we'll continue our efforts to improve older adults' access to information. Where do they get what they need? And that's continued to be a problem for years. One of the ways we hope to do that is encourage further coordination, cooperation, and between agencies currently providing services. Let me just take a minute here to say that the commission understands that it takes time for priorities to shift at the federal level, at the state level, and at the local level. And we understand there are no new money at this time. So what we see we need to do is do better with what we have and do more with what we have. And as you may know, considering this fact, on September the 15th, the commission will be hosting a community forum on the Aging and Disability Resource Connection Model, which does just that. It better coordinates the services we have within the system. And I know some of you have already responded, you will be there. I've sent invitations to all of you, and I hope you will attend. We've got people coming from all over the community, from every segment, to begin to look at how do we address this challenge. So the commission is doing that. Finally, we will continue to refine, hopefully, our process of interacting with you and Health and Human Services to be a better service to you, to Health and Human Services, and to the residents of our community. And before I close, I have to say thank you to the board for your support, your continuing support, Supervisor Holmes for his liaison with us, and Health and Human Services and the Adult System of Care, who for years have been supportive and provided staff support to the commission. At one time, I was that staff support. So I want to thank them and you and our community for beginning to look at this issue that we've all seen coming for a long time, but now it's here. Any questions?
Any questions, Eldon? Is Supervisor Montgomery's light on?
I don't have a question, Eldon, but I want to say thank you very much for coming to all the MACs in the county, including some of the far-flung ones in eastern Placer County. I think the information that you brought forward was, as you mentioned, pretty much entirely unknown to some of those folks. I've had a couple of people follow up with me on some items that, or some issues, I should say, that you raised and some concerns, and so I think it was really valuable use of your time and a valuable use of the Municipal Advisory Council. So thank you. We really appreciate all your efforts on this, and if you feel that there are other things that you'd like to bring back to the Municipal Advisory Councils, please let us know, and we'll make sure that happens.
Thank you. I sure will. It was, as I said, it was a great experience visiting with the MACs. I wasn't sure of their role and what they did out there, and as I began to realize that more, I felt like they have a role in this. They're making recommendations based on, hopefully, now, population information that may have them look at things a little bit differently, which I think we all need to do.
Yeah, and I think it's also important to recognize that they are, you know, a conduit from their communities to us and vice versa.
Absolutely.
And so part of what I heard from some of my MAC members was, hey, I'm going to go talk to so-and-so in my community because I think they should hear this information. So again, thank you. And Maureen, thank you for all the HHS support that goes into making the Older Adults Advisory Committee work, and all the support moving forward for planning. It's really valuable. I think I'm the last year of the baby boom, so I'm looking forward to some of this at some point.
Supervisor Holmes?
Yeah, I too am there. I'm looking, I don't know if I'm looking forward to it, but anyhow, it is what it is. Eldon, I just want to thank you for your strong leadership in this and getting the word out, and Maureen as well. And I have to shout out to Leah Rosasco, who is my aide who shows up at your meetings. And thank you for the information you send regarding the agenda of the Area 4 Agency on Aging. It's very valuable to me to know what's going on regionally. In regards to future, you know we're working on the 2-on-1 Information and Referral System. That's going to be a huge boon to people that aren't as computer-literate, where they can make one phone call, particularly if they're in a crisis, they can make one phone call and get services that they need at the moment. And also, you know, we're working on the Multi-Generational Community Center, and that's also, to see this, what they call the Silver Tsunami. I'm a senior, but I don't consider myself a senior. I don't know how to say that, but I guess I'm young at heart. Anyhow, I just want to let you know that we are working forward to improve services and programs for our aging population. So again, thank you so much, and I see Dave from the Area 4 Agency on Aging. Thank you for being here too as well. Thank you.
Thank you. If I could, a couple remarks. We're pleased about 2-on-1. As you know, the commission recommended and supported the county in that effort two years ago, probably now. One of the things we find over and over, people have a hard time finding what's out there when they need it, and often, when they need it, they're in crisis, and it makes it even harder to find. So anything we can do to make it easier for this and all of our population to find the things, the information they need, because we have a lot in this county. We really do. Now we just have to have a way to have people find it when they need it most. You mentioned a multi-generational center. I think it is the wave of the future. I've said, and maybe you could say it this way to you, I'm 74 years old a month ago, and I'm not old. I'm not old. And I think that says something about the new aging process, what is old anymore? And it indicates we'll need to look at how we do things differently. This population of boomers and those of us that are beyond that won't look at, won't want the same things that our parents and their parents want, and we just won't. And a multi-generational center, I believe, is a step in that direction. Thank you.
All right, seeing no other questions by board members. Any members of the public have anything they'd like to add to this report we've just heard? A gentleman from the Area 4 Agency on Aging, have anything he wants to add? No? All right. Thank you very much for the report. Appreciate your update and your work.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move on to our 9:30 timed item. This is a public hearing regarding annexation of SMD 3 for the Berry property. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman Euler, members of your board. I'm Kevin Bell, Environmental Engineering Program Manager with Facility Services, and I have Andy Darrow, who's a senior civil engineer with Environmental Engineering, with me this morning. I'm here this morning to request your board hold a public hearing to consider annexation of parcel 037111006000 into Sewer Maintenance District 3. The property is located at 3770 Peach Circle in Loomis. Mike and Katie Berry are requesting annexation of the .92 acre parcel to connect to public sewer. If approved, the applicant will be required to pay the annexation fee in effect at the time they choose to make payment, as well as a $300 recording fee paid to the State Board of Equalization. The current fee is $4,440 per acre, which results in a fee of $4,084.80 at the current rate. Staff supports this request, and in order to move forward, I request that your board hold a public hearing, and at the end of the hearing, adopt the resolution included in the staff report to annex parcel 037111006000 into Sewer Maintenance District 3. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that your board has.
Board members have any questions, or staff prior to the public hearing? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Any members of the public wish to address the board prior to us taking action on this request for annexation? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, entertain a motion on the annexation. Motion, Holmes, second Duran. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Aye, opposed, none. Thank you very much. All right, well, that was record time. Mr. Ramirez, why don't you come on up for our first department head item? If you would please, this is This is Parks Maintenance Service Agreement with Pride Industries.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman Euler, members of the Board of Supervisors, John Ramirez, Parks Administrator. And this morning, staff is recommending your board approve an agreement with Pride Industries of America for park maintenance services in Granite Bay and Loomis areas in the amount of four hundred fifty-one thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars for a time period from September first, two thousand fifteen, to June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen, and that your board authorize the Director of Facility Services to sign the agreement and amendments up to ten percent of the original agreement amount. Parks Division maintains parks, trails, landscape grounds, and open space throughout Placer County, and we continuously evaluate the services that we provide and any alternative delivery models that could increase efficiency, reduce costs, and that addresses the many retirements we're experiencing in Placer County Parks Division. This includes evaluating opportunities to contract out parks and landscape maintenance services when it's in the best interest of the county to do so. Pride Industries of America is a local nonprofit company. They're dedicated to creating jobs for people with disabilities. In two thousand fourteen, the Parks Division contracted with Pride to maintain three parks in the Dry Creek area, and they've done a good job maintaining the parks, staying within budget, promptly address problems that came up, and so we've been pleased with the services that they've provided to us down there. In order to address current needs and to allow time to identify the best solution for long-term provisions of park maintenance services, the Parks Division recommends entering into a ten-month agreement for park maintenance with Pride for parks in the Granite Bay area and also in Loomis. During the ten-month period of this agreement, while the Granite Bay and Loomis sites are under contract with Pride, Procurement Services is going to conduct a complete review of the needs of the park maintenance services and solicit an RFP in a competitive market. The Purchasing Policy Manual exempts the competitive bidding process for contracts awarded to private nonprofit corporations who operate work centers for handicapped persons, and Pride qualifies for this distinction. Your board's approval is required to execute the negotiated agreement and to proceed with the BPO in the amount not to exceed four hundred fifty-one thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars. With that, I'll answer any questions.
Board members have any questions prior to us taking any action? Seeing none, any members of the public have any questions on this item? All right, we're being asked to approve the agreement with Pride Industries for parks maintenance. Any, do we have a motion by Board members? Motion Holmes, second Duran. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item number six. This is procurement-related item regarding library materials.
Good morning, Chairman Euler and members of the board. I'm Mary George, Director of Library Services, here with Brett Wood, Purchasing Manager. The library is continuously purchasing and adding new materials to the library's collection, including books and print materials, DVDs, audiobooks, downloadable audiobooks, music CDs, and streaming music, magazines and downloadable magazines, electronic platforms, databases, eBooks, and e-resources in a variety of popular formats. A majority of library materials are purchased from one primary vendor because the vendor's purchasing module connects efficiently with the library's catalog system. Since October of two thousand fourteen, your board has allowed for the flexibility of the library to order from a number of vendors without competitive bid, utilizing the exception for books, publications, subscriptions noted in the Purchasing Policy Manual, Section one-point-three-D. The library is requesting this morning the continued flexibility to procure these items and formats for the library's collection in order to meet customer demand in a changing library landscape. I am respectfully requesting your board to authorize the library to purchase materials from multiple vendors without competitively bidding, authorize the purchasing manager to sign the documents and contracts necessary in compliance with appropriate county policies in the maximum aggregate amount of four hundred and forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars for fiscal year to two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. This year's Friends of the Library donations are budgeted at approximately eighty thousand dollars and included in this total. Authorize the purchasing manager to sign the documents and contracts necessary in compliance with appropriate county policies for future budget years, up to the amount authorized and funded in the library's final budget in fiscal year two thousand sixteen, seventeen, and two thousand seventeen, eighteen. Thank you for your time this morning. Brett and I are happy to address any of your questions or concerns.
Questions by Board members? Supervisor Holmes.
Thank you, Mary. You mentioned that the Friends of the Library are contributing. Have all of the Friends of the Library contributed, all the groups contributed to the aggregate amount? And if those funds, I don't know what's come from each one, but do they have a voice in what the collection, what purchases are going to be in the collection?
Mm-hmm.
So they'll be, they'll be involved through the Library Advisory Board, is that?
Right. We've asked each member of the Friends of the Library group to actually take all of the donated monies that they raise and put them towards the collection.
Okay.
Ninety percent of the people that come into a public library check something out, and so we want the Friends to recognize that, you know, that popularity of the fact that they can raise those monies, and we want people to see that.
Okay.
So each year, we ask the Friends to kind of estimate how much they're going to be giving us, so that we can include that in our amount, so we don't go over our appropriation. And then each Friends of the Library group can work with their library branch manager to determine what kind of materials the library needs. Frequently, the Friends of the Library put their funds behind what we call a lucky day or express collection, which means that the materials are purchased and they stay locally within that library for a amount of time before they're available for the rest of the system. That means that people can come in, and it's their lucky day, you know, when they see it on the shelf. So that's kind of how we work with our donations.
Well, with any luck, it'll be successful.
That's right.
Supervisor Montgomery.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to call out something in here, which was, I was both a little disappointed to see it, but I was really glad to see it called out, and that is just the one sentence that says, "At this time, there are no providers in Placer County for library materials." I'm naturally a little disappointed that there aren't any Placer County vendors to whom we can turn to provide us with some of these materials, but I'm also really pleased to see that you recognize that if there were Placer County vendors, we need to be reaching out to them, because the more revenue we can keep internal to Placer County, the better for all of us. So I really, as I said, was both sad and delighted to see that sentence in there, but thank you very much for calling attention to that.
Sure, and we do buy materials, local Tahoe history books-
Yes.
-from local bookstores. The Real Foods Cookbook, we needed to buy locally. We buy things from the museums for our local history collections, so whenever we can, we always look for a competitive price, but we also look locally.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
You bet.
All right, seeing no other questions or comments by Board members, any members of the public wish to address the board prior to us taking action on this particular purchase item? Seeing none, what's pleasure the board? Motion Montgomery, second Holmes. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go ahead and jump to our nine-forty timed item. We refer back, regional sewer connection fees. We're being asked to consider modifications in both SMD two and three.
Chairman Euler, I'm Kevin Bell. I'm here this morning to request your board hold a public hearing to adopt an ordinance amending Section one-three-one-two-three-five-zero of the Placer County Code to increase regional sewer connection fees for sewer maintenance districts two and three, which is Granite Bay and Horseshoe Bar areas, and county service area twenty-eight, Zones two-A, three, Sunset, and one-seventy-three Dry Creek, and make a finding pursuant to Section two-one-zero-eight-zero B eight of the Public Resource Code that the connection fees are derived directly from the cost of providing service and are therefore exempt from environmental review. Under the county's agreement with the South Placer Wastewater Authority, wastewater is collected in the referenced sewer service areas and is conveyed to the city of Roseville's wastewater treatment plants for treatment. The agreement requires payment of a regional connection fee to fund future expansions of the wastewater treatment plants, and it includes an annual inflator based on the ENR Construction Cost Index. The SPWA Board approved the increase on July first of this year, and the increase is simply a pass-through. The current regional fee is seven thousand fifty-seven dollars, which is set to increase two-point-four-eight percent to seven thousand two hundred and thirty-two dollars per equivalent dwelling unit, with the total connection fee of eight thousand seven hundred dollars. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that your board has.
Board members have any questions prior to us taking, or prior to opening the public hearing? Seeing no questions by Board members, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing in order to consider this modification of a few ordinances. Any members of the public wish to address the board? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring them back to the board.
Move through staff recommendations.
Second.
We have a motion by Wigan and second by Montgomery in order to approve these modifications to the associated fee schedules as outlined in our staff report. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none. Thank you very much. All right, jumping back to our department head items, moving on to Public Works, Kings Beach Commercial Core Improvement Project, a contract change order. You're not Brian.
Sorry, Peter Kratz.
That's all right.
Same department. For the record, Peter Kratz, Public Works. Greetings, Chairman, members of the board. Here to present this item, the department today asks for your approval to increase the contingency for the Kings Beach Commercial Core Improvement Project, construction contract number eleven forty, from six to nine percent for a total not to exceed contingency amount of one million nine hundred and twenty-three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. This equates to a contingency increase for this request of six hundred and forty-one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. This request also includes asking for your board to authorize the Director of Public Works to execute contract change orders up to an equivalent total not to exceed amount of just over one-point-nine million, as stated in your board memo. In summary, the reasons to increase the contingency for this project relate to earthwork quantities that exceed the original calculated design amounts. In addition, there were utilities not properly located that resulted in unanticipated costs. And finally, the requested modifications by Caltrans recently for a median island reconstruction will also result in increased costs. Typically, our construction contracts have a ten percent contingency, but as, but on larger ones like the, like this one, we try to go in more lean and be as fiscally conscientious as possible along the way. With this requested contingency increase, it raises our total contract amount to just under twenty-three-point-three million, and our various secured funding sources can support this increase. So with that, I ask your board to approve this item before you and stand for any questions that you might have.
Supervisor Montgomery.
Peter, thank you, and welcome to the Flatlands. Good to see you.
Yes.
Did have a question for you. When you say the utilities were not properly located, what does that mean? Does that mean they weren't marked appropriately, so they were somewhere different than we expected them to be, or they were placed and then had to be moved?
I think a little bit of both. A lot of times with these older utilities that we run into, and Kings Beach and other places, they were, I think we saw it both ways, and we lean on those agencies for, to share those costs, but it still comes back for the contractor, for delay, to respond. He's ready to go, utility isn't there, so he has to wait. So we share those costs with the utility companies as much as we can. We can't fully burden those utility companies, so we bear some of those costs back to us.
Understood. And in terms of these changes, is it going to extend the time for the project itself? Has it created more time for the project itself beyond what we had originally envisioned for this season?
It has increased some time, and so in response to that and some of the increased earthwork quantities, for example, and the reconstruction of the medians as requested by Caltrans, our push now is to make sure we get all the highway, highway work done this season, all the sidewalks that are planned for the highway, and some work for this contract may go into next year, but the intent is to have that work be on the county roads, so the impact on the highway next year is minimal to nonexistent.
Okay.
And that will help those businesses on the highway not have to deal with more construction next year.
And these additional costs are contained within the, your fiscal impact analysis? We have dollars, so we're not going to need to go out to look for additional dollars for these costs.
That's correct.
All right.
One thing to note on the median reconstruction, that we tried hard to push back on Caltrans, they came forward with their own money, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's added to our budget, their dollars. They were obviously serious about wanting to see those islands reconstructed. I think if they had not brought any money to the table, we would have pushed, we had more leverage to push back.
Right.
But in the end, they really, from a long-term safety perspective, they want those islands reconstructed.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And Peter, what was the nature of the changes that they wanted on the roundabout islands?
The round, the center roundabout itself is fine. The splitter islands that, on each side of the two roundabouts, have relatively steep curb angles, and so their plows, last year, and even in the low winter we had, we did have some snow on the highway to be, to be removed, their plow blades hit those, those steep curb angle, those steep curbs, and that causes a long-term safety issue for their operations. They approved those curbs back in the, back when these plans went through the approval stages, but as always, I think with staff, in any agency, they had their maintenance, I don't know if they had their maintenance, people look at these plans, but once they were out there operating, it just did not work for them.
Okay, so it's not so much the roundabout itself, it's the divider that separates the lanes as you lead into the roundabout?
Correct. It's a separate concrete median structure-
Okay.
... as you lead in and lead out of those roundabout intersections. Correct.
Great, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Okay, prior to the board taking action on this contract change order, any members of the public want to address the board? Seeing none, what's pleasure?
May I have approval?
Second.
Motion Montgomery, second Wigan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Staying in Tahoe, moving on to the Truckee River watershed water, water quality monitoring contract.
That's a mouthful.
Mr. Costa.
Good morning, Bob Costa, Department of Public Works. I'd like to introduce to you Mary Keller. Mary Keller is the supervisor of our water quality implementation program, as well as our floodplain management program. I don't believe she's been here to your board before. She's been with the county for a while, so I'd like to introduce her, and she's going to present this item.
Good morning. Good morning. This item is requesting the board to approve the continuation of the Truckee River watershed water quality monitoring program. In two thousand and six, the Lahoton Water Board designated the Truckee River Basin within Placer County and the town of Truckee to be covered under the state municipal water quality permit. As part of this permitting, the water quality monitoring is required. In two thousand and nine, a comprehensive water quality monitoring plan was developed. The monitoring plan covers the Truckee River Basin from Lake Tahoe through the town of Truckee. The plan has three primary objectives. It provides a basis for evaluating the county stormwater management program effectiveness. It satisfies the county commitment to modern water quality as stated in the two thousand and three Marthas Valley Community Plan, and it evaluates progress towards meeting the state's total maximum daily load standards, also known as TMDLs, for sediment in Squaw Creek and the Truckee River. The current monitoring is implementing phase one of the monitoring plan. Phase one is a base-level effort that focuses on developing the Marthas Valley area and the Olympic Valley where specific TMDL requirements, monitoring is required. Phase one also incorporates monitoring conducted by others in the region. The current consultant contract for this monitoring expires in September. A new contract is needed to continue the work. Approximately ninety percent of the contract cost is provided by the Marthas Valley County Service Area Zone of Benefit. The Olympic Valley Bio-Assessment is funded through an agreement with three Squaw Valley water quality monitoring permittees, and Truckee River monitoring is funded through use agreement with the Truckee River Rafting Companies. The remainder of the funding is within the department's budget. It's requested of your board to adopt a resolution authorizing the Director of Public Work to execute a contract with CDM Smith for the continuation of the Truckee River watershed water quality monitoring in the amount of six hundred one-six-twenty-one for the period of October first, two thousand fifteen, through September thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, and give authorization to extend said contract for additional two-year period through September thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, at a negotiated amount not to exceed three hundred and sixty-five thousand per year. Thank you for your time, and if you have any questions?
Board members have any questions? Supervisor Montgomery.
I just had, I think the proposal is fine, and I'm in support of it. I just, I was struck by the fact that we- I just, I, I was struck by the fact that we sent information about this proposal to two hundred and sixty-six firms and only received two responses. Is that normal?
I think it's very specific because of the monitoring in the Truckee River, you need to be there for a rain event, and you be, need to be able to react quickly to go out and do the monitoring. There's not a lot of consultants in that area. The second proposal we did get, they had some contract workers that they had in Northlake Tahoe and Southlake Tahoe, but to get over to Truckee in case of an event, if it's snowing, it's raining, it's a little difficult to, to react.
And where is CDM Smith located?
They're in the town of Truckee.
They're in the town of Truckee, so they're on site.
They're on site, their people are local.
Okay, thank you very much. Just struck me as odd.
Thank you.
Board members have any questions? The only question I have is, for how long must we continue with this monitoring program? You've asked for this particular extension, but are there any kind of specific guidelines that state that after X number of years of monitoring without substantial deviation from what is established as a baseline, we can discontinue monitoring, or is this kind of an in perpetuity thing?
I, I think once we have established a long enough period of time to go back to the La Houghton Board and say, here's what we have, here's what we're showing, but because it is a plan that's able to evolve, the last six years have been difficult to put emphasis on any one thing because we've had everything from a very wet year to currently no water in there, so it's very hard to establish any trends. So I think once we have that gone long enough and we can establish or even modify where we're monitoring to another area, we think might have more of an impact.
Okay. All right, any members of the public wish to address the board on this particular contract prior to us taking action? Seeing none, what's the pleasure of the board?
May I have approval?
Second. Motion by Montgomery, second Wigan, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. Thank you so much. And we will move on to our item, our sheriff's item, California Board of State Community Corrections 2015 Jail Construction Financing Program. Ms. Regan is gonna kick us off here, and then perhaps Mr. Powers will take over.
Good morning, Chairman Euler, members of the board, Becky Rigan from the County Executive Office. I'm joined this morning by several members of the sheriff's office, Lieutenant Dave Powers, Lieutenant Carol Walsh, and by the sheriff's administrative services manager, Mark Jacoby. Today's action requests approval of a resolution authorizing application for California Board of State and Community Corrections Jail Construction Financing, referred to as Senate Bill 863. The funding project is the final component of several county planning efforts in recent years to position the county for effective implementation of public safety realignment and related legislation such as Prop 47 that have significantly impacted the justice system and specifically the sheriff's correction and detention needs. This proposal is the result of a recently completed needs, jail needs assessment authorized by your board in June of this year and is consistent with the comprehensive master plan recommendations developed by the Criminal Justice Policy Committee and presented to your board in September of 2014, all of which support more effective transition of offender populations back to their communities. The state has authorized five hundred million dollars for county construction projects with a hundred and sixty million available to mid-sized counties such as Placer. The total cost of this project is forty-four million, with forty million anticipated through fate, state funding, and the required county match of four million to come from the public safety contingencies, contingencies fund. At this point, I'll turn the presentation over to Lieutenant Powers to briefly highlight the project components.
Good morning. Thanks for having us. What the sheriff's office would, what we're proposing and what our vision is, is to call, is add housing to the South Placer Jail. We're looking at calling it Spirit, which is South Placer inmate rehabilitation instructional training. What we're looking to do is adding vocational program spacing as well as acute mental health housing to the current facility. What we're actually gonna, specific numbers, is we're going to add sixty-bed male reentry housing, sixty-bed female minimum security housing, a forty-eight-bed acute mental health housing, as well as expand the inmate programs, add vocational shops which are non-existent at this point, classrooms as well as interview and counseling rooms. And there is a footnote that this is ongoing operational cost, it's gonna be consistent with the sheriff's two-year operational plan that was already approved by the board. This is a quick overview, this is the current layout of the South Placer Jail. You can kind of see the blue is gonna be additional housing on the left side of your screen is where we're gonna add the acute mental health housing. To the right side, lowered right corner is gonna be the male and female minimum security housing as well as the vocational and programming space. If we are lucky enough to receive this funding from the state, what our plan is to close part of the Auburn Jail. We would be, our plan is to close Housing Unit Three as well as Housing Unit One and ship those inmates, or not ship them, but move those inmates down to the South Placer County Jail where they can receive the vocational and programs that, that they need, that they can't currently get up in Auburn. These are just some numbers for you. As of today, the Auburn Main Jail has four hundred and ninety-two available beds in it. The South Placer Jail has four hundred and twenty for an overall capacity of nine hundred and twelve. If we get the SB 863 funding with the closing of Housing Unit One and Housing Unit Three, our total capacity in Auburn is gonna be a hundred and ninety-six inmates. Those inmates will be moved down to South Placer Jail. With the Spirit housing of a hundred and sixty-eight beds, our overall capacity there will be five eighty-eight, which makes a total of seven hundred and eighty-four beds. You definitely see the difference in the drop in the number of rated beds with, within the two facilities. We don't, we do not anticipate any problems with that. Basically, what we're doing is we're dropping the total number of beds, but we're getting the, the correct beds that we need, the vocational training, the programs beds, the acute mental health training beds, that's what we need, and that's what we're looking for. And with that, you're open it to any questions, board?
Board members have any questions at this time? Supervisor Holmes.
Yeah, I'm pleased to see that you have the acute mental health housing. Are you gonna have staff members? I don't think the funding for the staff members is included in this grant or funding.
Right.
But do you have enough staff members that are trained in mental health? Is that gonna be something through Health and Human Services or?
With Health and Human Services as well as our, our medical provider CFMG, it'll be a combination of the two.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Duran.
Yeah, I wanna thank Sheriff's Office for, for bringing this item to the board supervisors. When Judge Paneshi and I brought forward our recommendations from the Criminal Justice Policy Committee, that was kind of like the cornerstone of how we were gonna move forward our criminal justice organization. And particularly helpful was the approach that the sheriff's office took when we initially started going through these changes, first starting with AB 109, then with AB 47. And I, I really appreciate the, the mindset. Obviously, the sheriff's office is gonna be real skeptical, that's your job, I appreciate that, that's what we pay you to do, but in looking at the evidence-based practices and approaches, I can really see that you have, you're not all in yet, and that's still a good thing, but you're still heading in that direction and, and adding this wing, adding the services from the mental health to the different addiction components as well as the rehab, I think that's, in the overall scheme of cost savings, that's gonna end up saving us a lot of, a lot of money. We can put it someplace else to assist the folks here in Placer County. So I wanna thank you again and wish you well. I will be supporting this project, and whatever you need from us, just let us know. Thank you.
Supervisor Montgomery.
Yeah, I also wanna thank the sheriff's department for really kind of embracing this new approach. Change is always difficult, as we all know, but I think that what you're proposing makes such sense. And I think it relates a little bit to a conversation we're gonna be having later at the board meeting about homelessness, and some of the, some of the things that I see that you're proposing to do at, at the new facility when it gets built will hopefully keep people from falling back into homelessness when they're released from our tender care within, within our jail system. And so I'm really delighted on a number of levels to see this coming forward, and I really wanna thank everybody at the sheriff's department and county staff, CEO staff who also worked on this for taking, you know, what is a little bit of a leap of faith, but science-based leap of faith, so thank you very much.
Did you say released from our tender care at the?
Yes.
Tender as in like a bridge tender, or tender as in?
Gentle and loving and kind.
That the reputation you want? It's your jail. Would you go back to the slide that had the numbers on it for me, please? So what happened with the overall capacity? Where are the one hundred and twenty-eight folks? If we reduce Auburn down to one ninety-six while only taking South Placer up to one sixty-eight, that's a net out of one hundred and twenty-eight folks not contained within the two different facilities. So I'm wondering what happened to those people? Where'd they go?
Good morning.
Hi.
Mark Jacoby, Sheriff's Administrative Services Manager. I'll, I'll speak to this real quick just from a numbers perspective, and then I'll defer to the lieutenants about classifications and how they move the inmates around between the two facilities. What's missing from this, this is, this is the four-to-five-year plan. So assuming we get the forty million dollars and we get the four million dollar match and we build the hundred and sixty-eight beds, where we would want to land in five years is at seven hundred and eighty-four beds. The interim plan that's approved in the fifteen, sixteen budget that added the twenty-five allocations is to open the hundred and eighty beds in, in South Placer, take Housing Unit Three, and reconfigure a hundred and fifty-eight beds in there. So essentially, there's a, we're missing a piece here.
You're taking the four twenty up by one eighty up to six hundred is what you're saying?
Correct. We're gonna go from nine twelve.
Then reducing by the one fifty-two, is that what you said?
The, the, the numbers between the facilities escaped me right now, I don't have them right in front of me. We go from nine twelve to eight hundred and thirty-six, and then from eight hundred and thirty-six down to the seven hundred and eighty-four. And so that's why when we look at the plan, we do expect the operational efficiencies, and we, we completely expect it to be staffing neutral when we finally get to the seven hundred and eighty-four. As far as classifications and moving around, I can let Lieutenant Powers speak to the number, the nine hundred and twelve beds that we have now, it's a, it's a big number. What I can tell you, and I've heard the lieutenant and the captains talk about it, is those nine hundred and twelve beds, it's a number. They're not filled simply because they're not the right kind of beds. And so I'll, I'll let the lieutenant speak to, as we get from nine twelve to eight thirty-six down to seven eighty-four, I don't think it's a linear comparison that you're, that you're physically taking that many inmates, you're not taking a hundred and sixty inmates and putting them into a hundred and forty beds. That's not the situation, but I'll let the lieutenant speak to that.
Yeah, when we, he talks about the classifications, as, as you know, in Auburn, we have Housing Unit Three as a dorm-style housing, and with AB 109, the classification sophistication of the inmates we're housing are completely different. Housing Unit Three, we just, we just can't put those inmates down there, and the problem we're having is we don't have enough celled space to put those more sophisticated inmate in those higher classifications. So that's kind of where, that's the problem we're running into. We're gonna get rid of that dorm-style housing if it's all said and done and we get this grant and get more decelled housing and more proper housing for the inmates.
Okay. Overall, as we are entertaining a higher sophistication of criminal element in our county jails as opposed to them going to state prisons, in order to accommodate that, we are having to make adjustments within our system that result in a net decrease in capacity for us to house people.
Correct.
By virtue of the fact that we've essentially had to dumb down our definition of people that we're gonna house in our jail and put more people out on the street under probation. Sounds like a winning model. All right, thank you. I don't have any other questions or editorial comments. Any members of the public wish to address the board on this item? Seeing none, we are being asked for a resolution authorizing for the submission of the application, hopefully get some of this money and reconfigure our space. A motion, Duran, second Holmes, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. Thank you so much. We will move on to item nine A. This is the Northlake Tahoe Resort Association, Second Amendment and Restatement of the Contract.
Chairman Euler, members of the board, I'm joined today by Cadence Matievich, our management analyst too in the Tahoe CEO office, who has really done a majority of the legwork on the negotiated contract that you have before you today, as well as a recent agreed-upon procedure of the previous fiscal year contract which led to some of the changes that you see here. So she's accompanying me and, if called on, may also participate in answering any questions. The amended contract scope of work and budget before you for consideration today will allocate six million, two hundred thousand dollars in transient occupancy tax funds to the Northlake Tahoe Resort Association for the promotion of tourism and implementation of visitor-serving capital projects and transit operations in eastern Placer County. The Resort Association's Board of Directors voted on August 5th to approve the amended contract scope of work and budget. The recommended contract amount will fund administrative costs, direct marketing, program research, visitor information, transit services, and various capital projects. In order to provide the agreed-upon services, the fiscal year fifteen, sixteen contract budget allocates funds to the following resource categories. Two million, eight hundred and thirty-one thousand, five hundred and nine dollars for marketing, two million, five hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars, one hundred and sixty-three for capital improvements, eight hundred and seventeen thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars for visitor support and transportation services. Included within those allocations are the Resort Association's personnel and general and administrative costs, which total one million, six hundred and seventy-one thousand, eight hundred and thirty-one dollars for this fiscal year. The fiscal year 2015, sixteen contract budget allocates eight hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars more than the contract budget for the previous fiscal year. As has been our practice in recent years, I expect to return to your board in the fall with a revised contract following adoption of the county's final budget in order to allocate any remaining fiscal year 2014, fifteen Tahoe TOT fund balance. This will likely result in a slightly larger final contract budget, and we currently anticipate that any fiscal year fourteen, fifteen fund balance would accrue to the capital projects fund in the county treasury. In addition to allocating TOT for fiscal year 2015, sixteen, there are a number of amendments proposed to the agreement and scope of work. These amendments are intended to do a variety of things, including more clearly align the tasks within the scope of work with the allocated budget resources, provide greater fiscal transparency and accountability, including the addition of monthly expense reporting and reconciliation, and ensure that the local community is engaged and has opportunities to participate in the Resort Association's decision, decision-making processes. Many of the recommended contract revisions are being proposed following an agreed-upon procedures review conducted by an outside audit firm in the spring of 2015, which examined the Resort Association compliance with certain contract requirements. In the fiscal year ahead, the Resort Association will continue their efforts to brand and promote Northlake Tahoe as a premier international mountain resort destination in the West, increase lodging occupancy mid-week and during the months of June and September, increase the number of conferences and group meetings held in Northlake Tahoe, solicit and review applications for tourism-serving capital projects, and submit recommendation to your board for funding of those projects that support objectives of the Northlake Tahoe Tourism Development Master Plan, which is expected to be brought to your board in late October at the Tahoe meeting. And also to evaluate the transit and transportation services needed to support tourism And also to evaluate the transit and transportation services needed to support tourism in North Lake Tahoe and make recommendations to your board for the types and levels of funding necessary for transportation services. Other specific deliverables under the recommended scope of work include, by October 15th, Resort Association adoption of updated supplemental operating policies and procedures relating to the expenditure of TOT funds for employee meals, travel, lodging and transportation, use of corporate credit cards, and the expenditure of TOT funds for business entertainment purposes, including the purchase of alcoholic beverages for clients and employees, delivery of an updated North Lake Tahoe Tourism Master Plan to your board on October 15th, which I referenced, excuse me, October 2015, which I referenced earlier, completion of a situational assessment and funding plan for bike trails in the North Lake Tahoe region, completion of an updated business plan for the scheduled airport shuttle service, with release of an RFP for service based on the updated business plan, and a word of a contract for those services no later than spring 2016. This concludes my prepared remarks. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. And as I was thinking, we were, I may toss it to Sandy or somebody, a representative from the Resort Association, but I'm not seeing anybody here or in the Tahoe office. So in their absence, I'm happy to attempt to answer any additional questions that you may have for them.
Senator Graham?
No, I want to thank you for bringing this item to us. As you know, we've had some interesting discussions with North Tahoe, most recently up in Tahoe with regards to a boat. And I'm very hopeful that our reaction to that expenditure kind of motivated them a little bit to embrace the changes in the way that we want to approach future funding. As you know, we have very limited resources and we really need to know what's going on when we write a check to someone. We want to know what's working, what's not working, because those resources are so sparse. So, thank you again.
Thank you.
Senator Montgomery?
Yeah, I want to take the opportunity to thank Cadence and Jennifer for all your work on this. I know that every time I've been in the Tahoe office, you both have been working madly, I think for lack of a better term, on this, to bring this to our board. I also would have liked to have thanked the Resort Association, but it doesn't appear that they are here. Referring a little bit to Supervisor Duran's comments and to some of the information that was daylighted through, through the review process, I want to say that I've been really encouraged by discussions with members of the Resort Association board, that they recognize that there were certain processes that frankly, we as a public agency that does sign the check, need to make sure are followed and adhered to. And I've seen emails and had personal conversations from members of their board that have really recognized the importance of that. And so I'm really looking forward to working well together over the coming years and, you know, continuing to deliver the great product frankly, that the Resort Association delivers. But again, meeting all the criteria that we're subject to as, as, you know, managers of public tax dollars. So thanks to you, thanks to anyone from the Resort Association who might be listening somewhere. And, you know, I look forward to continuing the work for years to come.
Senator Holmes?
Thank you, Cadence and Jennifer, for bringing this forward. I have a question about the, the item that the Resort Association is going to retain the responsibility to contract for capital projects. If they're county projects, why would we have them, I mean, retain the responsibility? It seems like it's going to, it's too convoluted, if you ask me. I, maybe I'm mistaken.
And thank you for your question. It, it can get convoluted on occasion, especially when they're county projects. We have really tried to pull back the kind of back and forth or circular arrangement with some of these contracts. We are taking on all of the transportation contracting for all transportation projects, either by providing the services directly through our Tart Bus system or by contracting with subcontractors ourselves. We did initially recommend that we move toward a similar model for all of the capital projects contracting. And the, the Resort Association requested to have another opportunity to make improvements to their system, to have contracts with the, the folks who are receiving the money, the grant applicants. I, I think we will still continue, at least for this year, having contracts with the county for county projects as we do. In fact, I just had a conversation a few moments ago with Assistant Director Peter Kratz with Public Works about one of the contracts that we've got now. So we'll be continuing to try to streamline that, streamline that, because we certainly acknowledge that it, it can be cumbersome and circular and...
Well, it just seems to me that since there's a Tahoe factor up there with the TRPA and everything, it's just another layer that we have to go through to get our projects done. So quite frankly, I can't support this until that's resolved.
Okay.
There's also, we're not getting any compensation for the $100,000 for the staff time involved in, in all this. That's, that's been agreed to as well.
On the, I'm sorry.
Well, the reduced compensation to Resort Association by $100,000 to offset increased county costs.
Yes.
And we're not going to do that as well.
Yes.
Okay.
But Cadence, can you answer that one for you?
Okay.
Supervisor Holmes, thank you for that question. That was something that we had originally proposed early in the negotiations with the Resort Association. As we talked about what functions they would retain and what functions perhaps we would transfer and have county staff perform, when it was determined that we would leave the bulk of the contracting for the, which is really for the capital projects with the Resort Association, it was determined to leave that revenue with them to allow them to pay their staff to do that. As Ms. Merchant indicated, we'll, we'll be monitoring that over this coming year, looking for efficiencies, and evaluating for the next contract round whether or not that would be an appropriate step. And at that time, if we did go forward with that, we would anticipate an adjustment in their compensation to adjust for those reduced responsibilities.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any members of the public wish to address the board, perhaps taking action on this contract amendment? Seeing none, what's the pleasure of the board?
Move, purple.
We have a motion and a second. Why don't we roll call this one, please?
Montgomery?
Yes.
Duran?
Yes.
Wiegand?
Yes.
Holmes?
Euler?
Hi. All right, thank you so much. We'll move on to our supplemental agenda item, item 9B. This is a request by the County Executive Office to authorize the chair sign a letter of support for the United Auburn Indian Community's amended tribal-state gaming compact with the State of California. This is Joel or Rob, who's going to jump on this?
I'll start, Chairman. Good, Rob Sandman, Deputy County Counsel with the County Counsel's Office. Before you this morning, on your supplemental agenda, including some additional supplemental materials that were provided yesterday, is a request from the United Auburn Indian Community for your board's support of AB 315, a bill pending in the legislature for ratification of an amended tribal-state gaming compact between UAIC and the State of California. As I think most of the board knows, the tribe and the State of California entered into an original compact in 1999, which provided the initial state legal authority for the tribe to move forward with Thunder Valley Casino, ultimately named Thunder Valley Casino. I think as your board knows, and certainly as well, in 2000, the county and the tribe entered into the memorandum of understanding, which directed and governed the intergovernmental relationship between the county and the tribe as development of Thunder Valley moved forward. There have been a few amendments since, one to the compact in 2004, which provided for additional payments to the state and a number of other changes. In 2003, the county and the tribe amended the original MOU to provide for additional emergency services payments. Subsequent to that, I think as most of the board knows, there have been a continuing relationship between the county and the tribe in the operation of Thunder Valley and other lands that are subject to the MOU. In 2015, the tribe has negotiated a new compact with the State of California, which has been provided in your materials, was presented to the governor for his signature last Friday. Your materials summarize the key provisions of the amended compact, which in principle form redirect significant sums that the tribe is now paying to the state into what amount to more locally-directed funds. And there are representatives of the tribe here today who will be prepared to speak to those in more detail. Principally, that's a $9 million, what we've called in your materials, an infrastructure fund. It's a credit on payments that the tribe will be making to the state. There's an additional $9 million credit involving different categories, which we've described generally as revenue-sharing trust fund or tribal nation grant fund payment. There are some additional provisions regarding reporting, compliance measures, that sort of true up and bring the, the state gaming compact up to date. The compact, amended compact also provides for a maximum 3,500 gaming devices at Thunder Valley, and that replaces what was previously an unlimited number, though subject to some escalating payments. There are a number of technical provisions, of course, in the compact, and of our specific questions, we can field those along with representatives of the tribe. If there are any further questions, I'd be happy to take those. And Joel Joyce from the County Executive Office is here as well. Thank you.
Great. Board members, have any questions? I don't see any questions, but board members at this time, any members of the public wish to address the board, perhaps taking action on this? Seeing nobody rising, what's the pleasure of the board?
Second.
We have a motion, Holmes, second Montgomery, in order to support the tribal-state gaming compact with the State of California from our friends, the Auburn Indian Community. All in favor, please. Oh, I'm sorry, Senator...
I just had a quick comment, and, and I wanted to thank the tribe for its relationship with the county in having engaged in this type of work outside the board of supervisors. The relationship between a native nation and, and a county is, is, is very important. It's very important to the county, it's very important to members of the tribe. And you, you can just look at other counties and the relationships, and I can mention some down in Southern California, where they don't even talk to each other. So I think the relationship between United Auburn and the county historically has been a very positive one. Having sat across the representative from the governor here in negotiations, myself, and having negotiated these, it is a very difficult situation, and the fact that they got something done and they're bringing that before the board of supervisors is a good thing. I wish you well. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Senator Duran, Senator Holmes.
Oh, I just want to thank Robert Wiegand for his vision when this whole thing came forward. It was very controversial, and Robert was able, and along with Tony LeBeuf in County Council, to make this, the casino and the tribe happen out in the Lincoln area. And it can't be, it's, can't be ignored. Your, your leadership on this was very instrumental, not only for Placer County, but tribes throughout the state. So, thank you.
Senator Montgomery?
Yeah, I want to take the opportunity both to thank the tribe, the governor's office, and of course, Robert, because without Robert, he's sort of the glue that holds us all together here, I think, or at least the historical memory of all of this process.
I'm having a good day.
You are having a good day, yeah. Put this on your, in your calendar, remember it. But I really want to make sure that, you know, Gene, was there anything you wanted to add to this conversation before we take a vote? We sort of moved quickly through the process.
Yes. Chairman Euler, members of the board, my name is Gene Whitehouse. Of course, you know me as Chairman of the United Auburn Indian Community. And I'd just like to thank you very much for supporting the tribe as much as you do, and especially our representative, Mr. Wiegand. He's been such a kind of a role model for me. Getting in political office has been kind of new, and if I got a mentor like him, I couldn't ask for a better person. So again, on behalf of the United Auburn Indian Community, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. I'm sorry, it was long ago enough now. Did we actually have a motion? A second? Okay. Thank you. We had a motion, that's right, and then Supervisor Duran. Okay. All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None. Thank you so much. All right. That concludes our, with the exception of our 11 o'clock timed item, that concludes all agenda items before the board today in public session. We do have a number of closed-session items, so we're going to go ahead and adjourn to closed session. County Council will read us into closed session, and then we will be back at 11 o'clock to take up our 11 o'clock timed item. So Jerry, you want to go ahead and take us on in, including, don't forget the supplemental agenda item?
Yeah, the board will now adjourn to closed session to discuss the two, discuss with council, the two items of existing litigation, Holbert versus Kennedy and Garwoods versus Kennedy, one item of anticipated litigation for the initiation of litigation, and for a conference with real property negotiators on two real property acquisition items.
All right. And we'll be back at 11 o'clock. And we'll be back at 11 o'clock.
All right, good afternoon, or morning still, I'm sorry. We're gonna go ahead and call back to order the... We're gonna call back to order the meeting of August 18th, Placer County Board of Supervisors. Having concluded all other agenda items prior to our 11 o'clock, the board took advantage of the opportunity to step into closed session and dispense with all of our closed session items, so at this time, I'm gonna ask county council to report out on closed session.
The board, returning from closed session, had taken the following actions. In the existing litigation of Holbrook versus County of Placer, the board authorized the defense of that litigation by county council's office. In litigation Garwood Building versus County of Placer, the board authorized the filing of a cross complaint by county council in that action. And in one matter of anticipated litigation, the board gave direction to its legal counsel. On two real property items, the board heard a report from their real property negotiators and gave direction to their real property negotiation team. That concludes the closed session report.
Okay, thank you, Jerry. So, a couple of things before we jump into this item. First of all, I still see kind of a smattering of seats here and there. There are a couple up front here, I see some in the mid. So, those of you standing in the back, if you prefer, you do have the opportunity to go ahead and sit, because something tells me you might be here a little while. So, if you wanna go ahead and get comfortable, do that. At the start of each board meeting, our board clerk reads off our meeting procedures, and since many of you weren't here to take advantage of that at the start of our board meeting, I'm just gonna go ahead and recap a couple of those first and foremost. If you have any one of these little things, as we just heard somebody did, if you could, please turn those to silent, that'd be great. There will be a chance for public comment. The way this goes is, we're gonna hear our staff reports. The board is going to ask questions of staff based on what is presented by staff. This is a notice public hearing, so, once the board is done asking our questions, we'll open the public hearing. At that time, that's when you'll be given the opportunity to step forward and address the board on the item. We ask that you try to keep your comments to three minutes. There is a timer that will be running at the podium. Please, when you do step forward, identify yourself for the record. Yes, we like to know who you are, but the record has to capture who you are as well. So, with those ground rules laid, we will go ahead and jump into this. And I'm not sure I see a whole bunch of high-powered staff folks sitting here, so I see Michael Johnson raising his hand to volunteer to kick us off, so, Michael, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Michael Johnson with the Community Development Resource Agency. Today's staff is making a presentation regarding a modification to a temporary conditional use permit for an emergency shelter out at the Placer County Government Center. Jerry Hawes with the Planning Services Division will be making that presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Honorable Board. Nice to see you all. Before I jump into this, a couple of quick housekeeping items. We did have a MAC presentation earlier this week, or, excuse me, a week ago today. And they took action at that hearing to recommend, on a three-to-two vote, approval of the use permit and the site access agreement modification. Also, we received correspondence. The correspondence we had received by the time the staff report was prepared has been addressed in the staff report. Additional correspondence we've received afterwards, I think you have in your packet, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if they're unresolved at the close of the presentation here. So, as Michael mentioned, the request before you at this time is the proposed modification of a temporary conditional use permit, which allows for the operation of an emergency shelter in the Placer County Government Center. Back on February 3rd, your board took action to approve the use permit, and this allowed for the use of Buildings 303A and 303B as an emergency shelter. The temporary use permit was approved for a period of one year. It began on March 31st, and it will run through March 31st of next year. With the use permit in place, Facility Services then was in a position to negotiate a lease agreement, which they term a site access agreement, with Right Hand Auburn, who is the applicant. At the following Board of Supervisors hearing date, this was February 24th, the site access agreement was authorized for a 90-day pilot program for the shelter. The applicant is now requesting some changes in the operation of the shelter that do not conform to the conditions of approval, and I'll discuss those modifications in just a couple of minutes. The shelter opened for operation on June 1st. As mentioned in the staff report, the shelter operates at capacity most nights, so there seems to be a need for a shelter somewhere in North Auburn. In addition, the facility has demonstrated some early successes in connecting homeless individuals with available county, state, and federal assistance programs, and I think Right Hand Auburn is gonna speak to that in a few minutes, but I can answer those questions if you have some to close here as well. Right Hand Auburn claims they can achieve even greater success if certain services are allowed to occupy or to occur on the site within the coming months. They have identified six operational or structural changes to the shelter that they believe would improve the quality of their service and provide personalized assistance to more individuals. I don't have many slides, I think it's too... So, here's the shelter location in yellow there. I think we're all pretty familiar with where it is in the context of the Government Center. So, here's a list of the proposed changes that we're considering for the use permit, for the temporary conditional use permit. The first change is a proposed expansion of the hours of operation to 24 hours a day. Currently, the shelter operates from 5:00 in the evening until 7:00 in the morning, and this allows for a good night's rest, showers, a dinner, and a breakfast for persons of need. But the hours do not allow enough time for Volunteers of America or any social service provider to visit with the clientele. Shelter staff is able to refer individuals to local services in the hope that those individuals seek out the services during daytime hours when the facility is closed, but there's no significant integrated coordination between the service providers and the clientele. Shelter staff believes that the program would be more successful if clients could spend more time in the facility to be assessed for needs and meet with service providers. The staff concurs. The second modification up here is a proposal to increase the shelter occupancy to approximately double the current figure. The shelter has demonstrated a need to exist in North Auburn, and that's evidenced by the fact that they're at near capacity most nights, at or near capacity most nights. Volunteers of America is concerned that near-full-capacity operations at this time, when the weather's, when the evenings are nice, will translate to operations beyond capacity as the weather moves or the seasons move from fall to winter and the nights become colder. Doubling the capacity is not an issue of space, there's plenty of room in the building. It's an issue of building and fire code compliance. So, understanding that structural changes and securing permits for those changes can be time-consuming. Volunteers of America is requesting approval of the structural changes now so that they may proceed with permits and have the renovations completed before the weather changes. Stated in the staff report, doubling the maximum occupancy to 100 will not result in significant increases in environmental impacts, including land use conflicts, and this is primarily because the land use is entirely indoors. Several of the barrack-type buildings in the Government Center have been intermittently used for transitional housing and other forms of residential use in the past. The clientele, for the most part, do not own cars, so you're not gonna see a corresponding increase in traffic in the area. And the maximum occupancy of 100 individuals would likely only be realized during true emergencies, so they operate at or near capacity now. They're not gonna be filling up immediately to 100 every night, it's gonna be during extreme weather events, we anticipate. The third request is to allow for onsite food preparation. In a nutshell, staff supports this request because the inclusion of food preparation does not appreciably change the land use. It simply changes nothing in terms of the functioning of the site. We did provide modified conditions of approval to address any changes that would result in the need for a building permit or health permit. The fourth request is to allow onsite counseling, medical service, or medical assistance, and substance abuse treatment. As I mentioned earlier, the shelter staff are currently only available or able to refer clients to outside services, and this program has met with some limited success. While the shelter functions well as a means of providing protection from the elements, it can easily accommodate additional services intended to help reintegrate individuals into society. Services like psychiatric screening, counseling, drug treatment, connection with social security and Veterans Affairs are the types of services that serve a greater need to address chronic homelessness. Because the provision of these services is largely an indoor-office type use, there would be no unanticipated impacts to the surrounding community. The fifth modification is to allow for onsite storage of personal belongings, similar to the request for food preparation, really doesn't change the land use, doesn't change any impacts from the project. And the final modification is a request to extend the site access agreement to the full term of the temporary use permit. So, consideration of modifications to the site access agreement, including extending the 90-day pilot program, will be addressed in a separate report by Ken Graham here with Facility Services. To ensure that the site access agreement conforms to the use permit, I have a little bit of discussion to provide for that. As mentioned earlier, the use permit anticipated potential, a potential request to extend the pilot program to the full term of the use permit. We anticipated this might come up. Staff has determined that the 90-day pilot program has demonstrated a need based on the average overnight occupancy. It has also demonstrated effective management of the program, and that's based on the number of successful referrals to local services. And finally, staff has determined that more time is needed to truly understand the land use compatibility or potential conflict resulting from a shelter within the Government Center. Staff takes no exception to the extending of the site access agreement to the term of the use permit, but again, the decision to your board take action will be delayed until we hear Ken's presentation. As the proposed modifications to the use permit are temporary in nature, only extending the term to the one-year term of the use permit, staff recommends approval of the temporary conditional use permit modification as it's set forth in the staff report. And this recommendation is subject to the findings and the conditions of approval that are contained in the staff report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions of Jerry at this time, by board members? Okay, we're going to go ahead and take the staff report for item 4B as well, so I'm sure after we hear that, there might be some questions that are kind of inclusive of both presentations, so, Ken, good morning.
Good morning, Chairman and board members. My name's Ken Graham with the Department of Facility Services. The second item that's corollary to the temporary use permit is your consideration of a site access agreement that's consistent with both any conditional use permit you approve as well as the request from Right Hand Auburn. In addition to that site use agreement, they are also requesting at this time that a financial contribution be made by the county for the continual operation of the shelter and for some of the capital improvements that are being proposed. So, gonna have a little recap here only because I think it is important to talk about. First and foremost today, we're being asked to extend the term of the 90-day pilot period. The use permit is good for one year, it will end on March 31st of next year. They're asking for you to extend that, their use, until March 31st of next year. In addition to that, as Jerry kind of talked about, they want to go to more of a 24/7 operation, or at least extended hour operation, to be able to expand the services that they're providing. They want to allow for some of the meal preparation. Today, all of that is volunteer-donated, or they have to go out and buy it, bring it onto the site. So, having some level, and I think they're proposing some refrigeration as well as commercial microwaves, to be able to prepare some of those meals onsite. The current use permit does not allow it, but it could be made, the facility could be made to allow that to happen. They also want to provide opportunities for folks, the guests at the shelter, to be able to get connections into various services, whether they be perhaps some volunteer medical screenings, whether there are HHS teams, or some counseling services to help them get on the road to getting out of the homelessness. One of the issues that they have faced is the personal storage of belongings. Those belongings, right now, they are not allowed to keep anything there during the day. That has prevented some people from participating because they can't bring anything into the shelter. They are seeking for some level, perhaps not everything, but some level of personal storage there at the facility, both inside the facility, underneath their beds, or in the bins underneath their beds, as well as perhaps outside. Next, they're asking to extend the occupancy. There has been a slight change from this, where originally they were talking perhaps as going as high as 100 under emergency circumstances. I believe their current proposal is at 75. So, to maintain the existing, right now, it's allowed 49, of which two of those people are monitored, so there's really actually 47 people there at the shelter. They want to be able at times, particularly during the winter, during inclement weather, to increase that by 28 and go up to a maximum of 75. So, although your use permit could be a different number, the site use agreement and their proposal right now is to extend it to 75 people, and that would only be during the winter months, essentially November through March, where most of the rain and cold weather would occur. Next, they're asking for a financial contribution. First, they're asking for $150,000 as a capital contribution for improvements that they're proposing to construct to allow for these services to be done. $85,000 is their estimate to create a 24/7 facility, most of that money being into the creation of a counseling room, a private area where people could get out of the living area and receive and have discussions privately with a social service provider.
Ken?
Yes?
Reser Homes, everybody's home.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, thank you, Ken. You mentioned about expanding the shelter for extreme weather conditions, rain and cold weather. What about hot weather? Has that been included in the expansion?
That has not been considered. Now, under the use permit, it's simply asking for a higher number. Your board could elect, in either case, to allow what you would choose to under the site use agreement.
So, any temperatures over 100 degrees?
That would be an option available.
All right.
So, $150,000 financial contribution, about $85,000 to make it go 24/7, that is like a counseling room. In addition to that, some electrical upgrades that would allow for the refrigeration as well as the commercial microwave ovens. Another $65,000 would allow for expanding the facility to house more people, and particularly that will be for accessibility improvements, exiting improvements, to make sure that it meets necessary building codes. So, that 85 and 65 comes to 150,000. Then they're looking for an ongoing operational contribution. They have termed that to be $450,000 a year annualized. While the term of this use permit is only seven more months, that $450,000 a year comes to be $37,500 per month. So, for the remainder of the term, assuming September 1st through March 31st, would be a contribution of $262,500. Their annualized cost in the expanded scenario is estimated to be about $750,000. So, the $450,000 represents about 60% of the cost of the operation of the shelter. So, the $450,000 represents about 60% of the cost of the operation of the shelter. The county secured Dr. Robert Marbut to do a homeless study and did surveys and made some recommendations. Those recommendations have been received by the county. That study does recommend that there is, there needs to be a homeless shelter, actually, I think they, he recommends two, one in the Auburn area as well as one in the western portion of the county. He actually does make mention of the onsite here and notices some pluses and minuses about at the government center, although in the end, he kind of says until you get a more permanent site, it makes sense to have it somewhere, and you've got one there now. And he was, he kind of recommended staying that course. It's important to note, Health and Human Services is going through some public information meetings, as well as some action planning on the Marbut study recommendations. Hopefully, in the next year, your board will be considering more permanent measures long-term about how we will address homelessness in Placer County. But today, the experience at the shelter, it is at or, it is near or at capacity most every night. They've served about 120 different individuals in the last 80 days or so, 30, over 3,000 night stays included in there, and over 6,000 meals being served. It appears that they have met a need that we have here in our community. From the community input side, we've had our website open and a place for people to allow for comment. We've also hosted a series of community forums, five of them, since June and the opening of the shelter, and we've had a lot of input. So, we've had people on one side that support the shelter and who want to see it, if not expand it, at least continue in operation. But we've also had a lot of local residents who have come out and expressed concerns about what's going on in the community and what they see as increased amount of incidences that are occurring, that they've seen. In the forums, I think there was a lot of talk about the shelter, but probably just as much, if not more, talking about a lot of the camping that was going on on the lawn. Your board did approve an ordinance back in June that took effect on August 6th whereby camping and personal storage of materials are no longer allowed out on the grass at the DeWitt Center. I think that has cleaned up a lot. How that may impact people's perceptions of the shelter remains to be seen. That's only happened approximately one week ago. Police statistics, very hard to get statistics and determine where it is and how it's going, but the Sheriff's Department has provided statistics about what kind of amount of calls they are receiving. There is an increase in transit-related calls, and I would even say a significant increase, depending on where you're at, happens to be that the DeWitt Center is at the confluence of three beat areas. They don't take statistics by little areas, but they take them by these large beat areas. There's three beat areas involved there. And there has been an increase in transit-related calls. We've actually encouraged people even at the meetings, if you see something, there is a deal, please do call. So, there are some real concerns in the community about the operations of the shelter, and probably even more so focused on just the amount of homeless activity near the government center. So, again, the financial request, $150,000, broken up into two parts, $85,000 to go to 24/7, $65,000 to expand the occupancy. There's the operating cost that really ends up being, assuming September 1st to March 31st, a request for $262,500 for seven months, a contribution towards the operational cost. It's important to note, that number has increased over what is in your board package because at press time of that, the request based on some of the math was 166,250. I think as some of the numbers got refined, we were able to get a more accurate number of what their request is. So, it is 262,500 for the seven-month period. So, staff, staff can support, as far as a recommendation goes, the operational changes that are being proposed. And I think we say that based on the fact that it is consistent with the Marbut study that says we should have a shelter and it should be 24/7. It does meet a demonstrated need. I think the idea of this 90-day period was, does it meet a need and can they do it responsibly? And I think they've met both of those. They have done it responsibly. We do so still knowing, though, that there are some community concerns and some real things that have been happening in the community that still need to be worked on and that are not settled yet. But I think, again, so I think we can support the operational changes. Financial contribution really up to your board and your board's priorities, based on the previous reasons, I, you know, having a financial contribution to that does not seem unreasonable. We are always in favor of leveraging our dollars. In this case, even at the maximum they're asking for, that 60% means 40% of that money is being leveraged from the outside, from the community itself. And so, with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions and allow you to turn it over for public testimony.
All right. Supervisor Wagon?
Ken, could you give me your personal assessment as to how effective the camping prohibition has worked as it relates to totality of the community concerns?
Well, I think the prohibition of the camping has not solved any issue. There are still the same people that had to be moved off the lawn. They're no longer congregating in one place, but they went somewhere. Some of them maybe left the county, but I assume and expect that many of those are in some of the outlying areas. With that being said, I'm not sure that 100% alleviates it. It's not as visible. Hopefully, the shelter, the goal in the end is to get more people in the shelter, transitioned out of the shelter to make more room for new people coming in. Because the idea with the shelter, that probably didn't mention, and make sure everybody knows, the idea is once you go into the shelter, you have a bed and a place there to try to stabilize your life while you're trying to connect with the resources that you need. And so, there isn't a lot of turnover until somebody is able to transition out of there. The more people are able to transition out, obviously bring more people in. I think it's going to go, I think getting people off the lawn, less visible, I think there probably is less issues that we may hear about, but it's not going to eliminate them because we still have people out in the neighborhood.
Supervisor Holmes?
Thank you, Ken. I've noticed since the lawn has been cleaned up, over on the other side, across from the jail where the gazebo is, I've seen quite a few people gathered there, and then, I can't blame them, they're sitting around in the shade. Has, are those, do you know if those people are waiting for the shelter to open up, or are they just transitioned from one camp spot to the next? Have you noticed anything of that regard?
Well, I've personally noticed that there are some people hanging out in that park by the gazebo area. There is, people are still allowed to use the park, whether they're homeless or not. We're just trying to prevent them from camping, setting up their lots of materials and storage of those materials. Most of what I've seen occurring typically is people with a limited amount of backpack or whatever the case may be. They still have every right to use the park as any other member of the public.
Supervisor Montgomery?
Thank you. Ken, I had just a couple of clarifying questions on some of the proposed costs for the tenant improvements or the structural changes, if you will. I'm really trying to break out or understand better the difference between what I would consider mandatory costs, so things triggered by the Americans with Disabilities Act, if we go above 50 people. You seem to indicate you thought that was around $65,000.
Correct, for the expanding the occupancy, which is exiting and accessibility.
Okay. And then the $85,000 figure is for, for lack of a better term, things that would be nice to have but aren't mandatory.
I would agree. The majority of that is to create a meeting room, and there's a portion of it is electrical improvements to accommodate some of the food storage and preparation.
Okay. I took the opportunity yesterday to speak with our chief building inspector. Is Tim here today? Hi, Tim. Thank you for the time yesterday. We went through, just on a very broad scale, the requirements for the ADA if we were to exceed that 50-person number. And what we identified as the requirement, so please let me know if we're wrong, would be an additional ADA-compliant fire escape door, or emergency escape door, a ramp that served that door, a woman's shower, potentially, a single woman's shower, and a mop sink. Is that, is there more than that?
What they have also proposed, and there may be a question about exactly what's required, is also to create an ADA path of travel to F Street. And there's some chain-link fencing to accommodate the pathway that they believe needs to be altered. And then also upgrade an existing ADA path of travel to E Street.
Okay, so the ramp that would come off the new door, would that go to F Street or E Street?
I believe that goes to E Street.
E Street, okay.
I could be wrong. F Street? Oh, that girl, we go.
F Street, okay. So, looking at this again, just very generally yesterday, and not including that upgrade to the ramp, but the door, the new ramp, the mop sink, and the shower, we ballparked around $35,000 for that. Any idea how you get to the $65,000 with those proposals?
You know, we have not, any part of any agreement for reimbursement would be about reimbursing them for their actual costs, not providing a contribution up to a maximum amount. The numbers, they probably do have to be prevailing wage, I don't know if those are things that are considered. My understanding is the people that have prepared that, they have secured an architect and a contractor who helped them prepare those numbers. So, we always think it's cheaper, so it doesn't surprise me that I always, it's always more than I think it is. But I can attest to exactly what it will cost.
Okay. And then on the, on the other upgrades, the $85,000, it looked from the documentation that the bulk of that would be to move the office that the sheriff is in right now, it's kind of a monitoring station, to the laundry facility, and then repurpose that former sheriff area as meeting rooms. Is that?
Yes. I think, I think the current monitoring area is for the sheriff to monitor the laundry. They want to use that room and provide the sheriff a new room to do the monitoring. So, yes.
Have we had any discussions with the Sheriff's Department about their long-term, or short-term, or medium-term intentions for the laundry facility? Because I've heard from a number of folks at the Sheriff's Department that they're actually looking at relocating their laundry facility to South Placer Justice Center entirely, and that may be apocryphal, but, which would then not require moving the monitoring station because it would just be gone.
The sheriff's office, or member of the Sheriff's Department, was on the walk-through to determine what would be needed to do this. Long-term, it wouldn't surprise me, a lot of the sheriff jail-type of activities are meant to go south. I think you heard an item earlier here today about that. But in the short-term, I would assume they would still need it until they don't need it. So, and since this is a seven-month kind of term...
That's very zen. I like that.
You know, it is a seven-month term for the use permit. I'm not sure they could clear it. We could ask them, but to this point, they were involved, and that is what they said their current need would be.
Okay. And then in the kitchen, it sounded as if what most of the costs in the kitchen would be, would be some, I'm going to characterize as minor electrical upgrades, but it would mainly be appliances. It wouldn't be infrastructure development within the kitchen, is that correct?
Yeah. How I understood the request is that they're asking us to reimburse them the construction costs to allow them to plug in what they want to plug in. So, I don't see the appliances mentioned here at all, but really the upgrades to the electrical panel to allow for those types of appliances to come into the building.
Okay. And then I guess just my last question for this first go-round is, if the internal tenant improvements for the meeting rooms don't go forward, is there a scenario under which something like a William Scotsman rental trailer could be brought in and just put temporarily on the site? Because this is a temporary use, I think in all our minds. And, you know, my guess is that's probably not going to cost almost $85,000 for seven months.
Yeah, I think the idea of a temporary shelter, we've actually had that discussion. I think that's a very viable option, should be priced out and could be compared to doing more of the hard improvements that may only be needed for seven more months of time.
Yeah, because I'm, frankly, I'm a little concerned about putting too many dollars into aging infrastructure when there are probably some better alternatives that are more effective, quicker to happen, and less expensive. So, that's, that's it for my questions for now. Thank you.
Okay. Supervisor Graham?
Yeah, just a couple of questions to kind of run on what Supervisor Montgomery was talking about. With regards to storage, have we, do they want to build storage? Are we able to move a C train out there and put it in a shipping container or something along those lines? What, what are those costs?
I've heard ideas of what different people have in mind. First and foremost, there are bins underneath the beds right now, and I think giving people a place just to, their real close personal belongings is probably first and foremost so they can leave their things during the day because they're going to come back to that bed in the evening. Beyond that, I have heard no proposal to bring out a storage, any large type of storage. I have heard people talking about maybe personal bins, kind of what you might say, like a recycling can, that people, that's the order of what I've heard, but I'll let them speak for themselves if they have something more in mind.
Okay. And have we done any, have we drilled down at all on the costs outside of the TI at all?
Outside of, outside of the TI for operations?
For operations, yeah.
Yeah, for the operations, we have gotten the cost estimates. I think they're all open for discussion. They are a proposal by the Volunteers of America to run the, run the shelter with a certain amount of personnel and a certain amount of incidental expenses, including food. Food and personnel are the two largest. Most of these have just been finalized in the last week or so. There have been no discussions or negotiations. All of those things are very...
Would your, they're very fluid. Would your department be open to taking a look at these expenses moving if we decide, the board decided to take some type of action?
Absolutely. I think if we end up putting public money, if there's a decision that public money or some level of public money support, I think it would, we would need to, to make sure that we could feel comfortable that the public funds are being spent appropriately.
Right, because I noticed that I've received three different drafts, and this morning I received three pages from VOA, and you, you know, we're never going to get to it, you know, 30 seconds before the board meeting, which makes it real difficult for me to make a decision on, on money. Also, the 60%, I have a little bit of angst over compared to, you know, what, what surrounding neighborhoods or governments, you know, what their participation share is going to be in this. So, I do have some concerns, and I share the same concern that Jen did about this being perceived as, as permanent. And I've said this before, I don't know how many times, that, that, there's, there's a project out there, and I think we're all finally getting our head wrapped around that what that project is going to be. And I think it's important, and here's why, I wanted to read a couple of numbers out for everybody, just so, so you could get your head around them as to why it's important. We've talked about numbers, but we haven't really talked about costs. So, I did a little research this weekend. LA County did a study in 2009, and their numbers were ages, homeless people from age 18 to 29, their annual cost, because they're in good health, was $4,872 per person. At 46 and over, and that's at the period of time when folks such as myself kind of, you know, start needing to go to the hospital more, that number jumped to $5,038, which, per month, and for an annual cost of $60,000. Forty-four, fifty-six. Per person, right. Now, Santa Clara County came out with their, they're doing a project, and they're actually doing a pay-to, pay-to-play, if you will. They're going to basically put monies forward, and they're not going to pay any more until the entity that they're working with demonstrates the reduction. But here's their numbers. And everybody feel real, feel real lucky that we don't have their issues. Their cost, they have 6,500 in their survey of homeless folks. 2,800 are the most chronic, at $83,000 a person, which works out to $2.1 billion, all right? Now, I've taken those numbers and I've kind of looked at what HUD has said and a couple of other studies from Portland, Oregon, and some other jurisdictions, and just, just for the sake of looking at the cost, honed it down to 40,000 per person. And that on a continuum of, some folks you're going to pay very little due to age, and some folks you're going to pay a lot. And these cost areas are substance, treating substance abuse, treating physical health, mental health, the criminal piece, and also the housing piece. So, if we were to take the four, the 540 that Mr. Dr. Marbut identified in the study that we had, and you multiply that... we had, and you multiply that times 40,000 apiece, the number comes out to $20 million a year. That's a lot of money. A lot of that money is broken down in medical costs, which are roughly averaging about $15,000 per, per person, but the more you're sick and the more issues you have, you know, imagine if you've got chronic folks that have the mental health, have a substance abuse issue, the cost goes astronomical. So, I just wanted to illustrate, we've talked a lot about numbers, but we haven't talked about the money that's spent, and now, and this is also part of the comparison, there is a savings there. We don't know what the savings is going to be, but I've talked it over with, with HHS, that there is a saving, is a lot, a lot of it may not be related to the county, but some of it might. But the point I'm trying to drive at is that for those folks that don't, they're just, you know, have concern, everybody has concerns, but it's the cost, it's their money that's being used, we write that check every day, you know, and if you add up over the last 10 years at 20 million a year, I mean, that's like putting up a new animal shelter every year that goes out, you know, and that's your money. That, that's your money, folks, and then, and I, and I just want to illustrate that as to what problem that we're trying to resolve here is going to take some time. I don't, along with Jen, I don't think that the campus is, you know, is, the plaster campus that, that at it D-Wid is, is that location, it hasn't been shown to me that that's the only place, and I think that there are some things that we need to continue to work through as part of this exercise, that I think we all can get our heads around. So I know that was a long-winded presentation, but I just wanted to kind of let you know where, where I am, where my thought process is, I think we're headed in the right direction. I'm not 100% convinced that we're ready for the 24/7, so I'll be asking for some, you know, I'll, I'll be raising something later on after everybody has an opportunity to talk about it, that kind of gets us on, gets us there in tanniment with what HHS is doing with the broader problem, or trying to resolve the broader solution of a permanent shelter. So, that's all I've got to say for now.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, I just wanted a clarification, Supervisor Durant, so the $20 million a year that you referenced, are the costs now without a shelter, in other words, there's a societal cost that are already...
Those are, those are costs that were based on what, you know, what the average for, for the region would be, and similar to what they're looking at at Santa Clara County.
At other cities that are, or counties that are similar to our size.
And, and so those are the cumulative costs, just so I'm really clear on, on what you said, those are the cumulative costs that accrue from, to the counties, to the city, to hospitals, to fire districts, to, to private business as well, is that included in there as well?
Right, right. So for example, Sutter, you know, they, they broke these costs down to, you know, per, per industry, so you've got a certain percentage, which usually runs around, well, at least they said the medical piece is $14,500. Now, if you have, you know, for that, that, that's a small amount of money. If you have a lot of problems and you're going to, to the doctor quite a bit because of the issues that you have, that, that number's going to go higher, and that, thus, that's where you get the $83,000 at the top end. And that does affect, because there is daily costs to put them in jail, there's going to be a daily cost to treat, there's other costs, and, and all I'm saying is that there's a huge cost out there to everybody, and that we're trying to get a handle on that cost, and maybe, when, when I keep saying medical, maybe there are some other partnerships that are out there that can, that can help, because I'm sure, in having talked to Sutter and in having talked to Kaiser, they can tell you exactly how much it costs, and it's, it's a lot, so.
Okay, thank you. All right, seeing no other questions by board members this time, I'd like to invite the representatives of Right Hand Auburn to come forward and address the board on the request for the modification, the reasons behind that, the arguments, if you want to make sure that we have.
Good morning, I'm Tom Loop, I'm from Right Hand Auburn, and we'd like to thank the board for this opportunity, and we'd thank as well Mr. Haas and Mr. Graham for their analysis and their presentation of what we are requesting and what has been accomplished to date. When we began this, this goal, it was a limited mission, it was one where we saw a need for emergency shelter during the winter, when people are out sleeping, out in the cold, and various members in our group of our community, members of this community, business people, professionals, clergy, entrepreneurs, some retired people, some people that are, most are still, most of us are still working full-time. But we saw a need, we wanted to do something for our community. All of us, I think, are aware of the need, we saw it out there on Highway 49, some difficult situations and some people at, at great risk, and we wanted to do something to help, and this board gave us that opportunity, and we do appreciate it. This board recognized back in 2004 that homelessness was a real problem in our county, and embarked at that time upon to try to develop some plans of how it could be addressed, how it could be improved, not solved, but improved, and we think, we appreciate that opportunity. What did we not want to see? What we did not want to see, and I think it's important maybe for members of the public to understand what our group did not want, we did not want to see homeless people wandering neighborhoods. We understand that concern of people who have that in their neighborhood. We did not want to see people camping out on government property, we did not want to see that awful eyesore. I would drive by there, and it was an embarrassment, it was shame, as what I felt as a member of this community, to see that campground. We didn't want that, we didn't want to see homelessness increasing, we didn't want to attract people. That has been commented at times that we have, but I just saw a study a couple weeks ago in Sacramento County, their population of homeless is about 2,900, about 3,000 for about a population somewhat more than three times our county's population. I've never heard or seen any numbers that would suggest that we have one-third of what Sacramento has, that we have 1,000, even, even if it's between Roseville and the Auburn area, we're, we're down in the 100 or 150 at the most. So I don't think we have increased homelessness here. We didn't want to see people sleeping out in the winter anymore, and people at risk, and we didn't want to see so many people pushing their shopping carts through shopping centers with their meager belongings, people, the veterans and crippled folks, and people that are really down and out. So we do appreciate that opportunity, and we were given a chance to do something with the barracks, with county property that was no longer in use. This is not a long-term solution, and I think we want the public to know that that's also the case, that we can understand objections to having it on the government campus, and maybe someday down the line, there will be another parcel somewhere in a better location, for, for more people a better location, that this county can make a commitment to, to have a facility. But that's down the line, and we still have a pressing need. Because like this board, we want a better community, and I think we're all in agreement on that, of course, the hard part is the details and the financial part of it. But we listened to the objections from the community, we listened to what Dr. Marbit said, we modified our requests in some of our operations, we have excluded people that we were asked to exclude, we understand that, we're willing to work with county staff, and they've been very good in working with us. We started this project with no money requested from the county, we did require some assistance since, and from county staff, and we received that, and we do appreciate that, but there's been nothing put into the hopper, so to speak, from the county. It's been from our hundreds of hours of time, thousands of dollars in food and in money and in services that were provided. As has been pointed out, we think we've done a credible job, we think the need is clear, it's been well demonstrated. Some of us weren't sure, I think members of the board and some of our group too, in the summertime, would we have more than 10 or 15? Well, we found out that we do, it's full to capacity almost every night. With the expert assistance of the Volunteers of America, who are professionals that are skilled and highly experienced in delivering services to the homeless, we have started something that is working, that is bringing about some improvement, and bringing about some improvement for our community and for these people. And now we ask this board to participate, not just in spirit. We've heard with the presentation of what we're asking, how these requests will improve services, will allow us to get volunteers in and professional social work people to come in, the county staff and volunteer staff such as AA and NA to have meetings, have places where the people can receive services and, and medical evaluation, evaluation for applicant, for applying for benefits and so forth. We're not asking for a, a single county employee, we are committed to raising 200 or $250,000 a year, continuing to do so both in cash and in food contributions and in meals, as we've been doing, but we cannot do this without the financial support of this board, of this government, and we think this is a worthy venture to continue on. We think that we have placed this thing before the board and gotten it going, and now we're asking for you to continue to work with us and be partners, not just in spirit, but also partners financially. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Bridget Barnes for Right Hand Auburn. So that you understand, Leo McFarland from Volunteers of America is going to be addressing operational issues with the shelter. On the packets that have gone around to board members, some of which were on early packets, we have very detailed budgets. You'll note that on those budgets, there, there are assumptions, some are 24/7, which is 47 people, the, the capacity we have right now, some are 24/7 but an expansion for winter or emergency, up to 78, and then some are basically full-tilt in terms of the number of capacity, but will be night only. So we're going to try to address the specifics of how we came to the assumptions that are included in those budgets, to try to respond to some of your questions. And then Jen Holdeman is in the back and can address many of the questions that Supervisor Montgomery raised about how we came to the assumptions that are showing on the budgets for the construction. So, we'll go with that, thank you very much.
Thank you, Bridget. Leo McFarland, Volunteers of America, Auburn resident. Good morning, everybody, I am here to talk to you a little bit about the operation of the shelters, the 78 days that we've now been operating, 47-bed capacity, broken up into 16 women and 31 men. We do have the flexibility, because of the bunk bed situation, to go above 16 women, but we have to reduce men when that, that occurs, so we've had some flexibility in terms of what the, the daily occupancy looks like. Much of the data has been spoken to earlier in the two earlier presentations about the performance and the numbers of different people we've seen. We break that data down, data, data, data is very, very important, we've been collecting all the data in the world that would meet HUD criteria, as well as some of your interest in, in who's, who's at the shelter, how long they're at the shelter, and everything that goes with that. Specific to that is the fact that the data truly translates into human beings, and the, the discussions about cost and hospitalization, and, and the questions about when it's, when it's excessively hot, how do we deal with this, who's sleeping out in the park, I can address all of those as well. But the, the data represents people who have come together and for the first 78 days have really formed a community, a core of folks that are in there and who very much appreciate what this community and this board has allowed to happen, because this is, and they have told this to me all the time, this has been a lifesaver for so many. We've reported out that, that eight folks have gotten employment while staying at the shelter. This was very important for every one of those eight people. When they, when I run into them, whether it's at a hardware store, or out and about in, in, in another shopping venue, they grab me and they tell me how important the fact that the stabilization that this shelter was able to provide for them, so that they could every day get their clothes washed, show up to work freshly showered, well-rested, has been, been critical to, to their success in getting jobs. We know that we have another dozen people that are interviewing for jobs and are out there actively searching, we know who have moved out, the eight people that have moved out into permanent housing or, or sustainable housing from the shelter, all of them look back and talk about that this was the stabilizing factor that they needed, that interim support that they needed, and, and the assistance they got through the referral process, because the access agreement didn't allow us to do any counseling or, or direct support services, but we were able to make it happen nonetheless. The veterans that we're seeing, the veterans who come to us with many issues, whether they be emotional, mental health, or physical issues, have been able to stabilize and begin getting, seeking treatment from the VA. The ability to go to, for surgery and come back to the shelter and mend is very, very critical. Every day I speak with somebody new who has come in and be, they have had some sort of operation, if you look around the room, you might even notice some of the people in here with leg casts on, with, with wrist casts, and I'm not Bridget, she, she does something else. This, this has been the place for these men and women to, at least for a short respite, find a place that they can stabilize and take care of some of their business. Now, yes, indeed, they go and get medical attention, but having that leg fixed now, and, and not fester and, and come into, create, be, develop into something more significant is really a money saver. And I'm not going to try to put a cost savings on that, just know that when somebody gets treated, and they can get that bandage clean, they can take, they can make sure that the infection doesn't set in, it really is a dollar saver. All of that is going on in a very, very positive way, so we're thrilled to death with that. But I want to keep coming back to this sense of community. There's a question about who's sleeping out, who's, who's not sleeping out, but who's sitting out in the park today? I was there this morning, there were eight people there, in the shade, and all eight were people who were staying at the shelter last night. That means that there were 39 shelter folks that, that did not sit out there in the shade and are out and about in the community today. Of those eight that are out there, about six of them are severely disabled. So, they are seeking a sort of short-term comfort level location to be until the shelter opens up. When I drove to the shelter yesterday, my car temperature meter said 109 degrees, so when I showed up at the shelter at just about 5:00, and there was a, a line queuing up, those folks were just beat, the heat just really saps your strength. Come into an air-conditioned facility, immediately start getting, taking showers, getting settled in, laying down, taking a nap, are life-saving opportunities. Now, that we're doing that on a 12-hour daily shift cycle, now whether or not you and, and your considerations might consider expanding that to 16 or 24, each of those extensions of hours of operations positively affect this community and will affect how we are able to serve folks. The expansion of space that we're talking about, Tom spoke to the NAA meetings that could occur, very, very important. This community wants to stay sober, this community monitors itself, this community comes to us and says, someone's over here is, is acting up, and that's when we sort of circle the wagons and make sure that we either address that issue or we correct it. And we've been very, very successful at that. You can look at our data in terms of police reports, ambulance services, everything is showing very positive. I'm, I'm just thrilled to death with how the shelter's operating, given its limited support system that's in place right now. The access to that space that is currently occupied by a sheriff's deputy during those day, times that the laundry is being used, is a critical monitoring point at that building right now. We don't have access to it, but allows monitoring ability into the courtyards on the men's side, and the courtyards on the female's side, interprets what's going on, so to expand your visibility, and that waiting room, that visitation room that would come along with an expansion, is where those NA meetings, AA meetings, and, and if you're going to expand services during the hot days or the very, very dramatic winter days, you've got the ability to move people inside, so they're safe and secure, on a temporary basis, which is what every shelter does in every region, they make their dining room or there are some space in their facility available for people to just get in out of those severe conditions. So those are all the things that we can't do right now.
Sir, I'm going to need you to kind of wrap up your remarks here, if you would...
Sure. We, we were asked to implement the HMIS system, and so we're, we're now migrating all of the data that we compiled in the early days into that system. We have daily reports on all the activities of the shelter, you should be very, very proud of the investment you've made to date, and hopefully the investment you'll make in the future. So, any specific questions, I'm happy to take.
I don't see any questions from board members, thank you.
Actually, I do have a question, and in, in looking through the proposal, I had Jeff Brown send over a, the proposal to Dr. Marbit, and he did bring up a concern with regards to the number of volunteers that were currently participating in the project, specifically that he would like to see more volunteers engaged for the folks that are there. Have you taken a look at that, are you considering that?
We're limited to two people above the client population. We obviously want to incorporate more volunteers, whether it's the medical technicians, the people who want to come in, and, and, yeah, yeah, that's absolutely, Mr. Durant, absolutely.
And do you have specific programs that you're looking at? And do you have specific programs that you're looking at in requesting from HHS to help participate, to help the folks that are staying there?
Well, right now, Health and Human Services are providing case managers to come over at least twice, maybe three times a week. They're meeting in our dining room just before dinner. They're working with, almost they're working through our whole client roster as best they can, whoever's on, you know, there during that time period. And they, I think, are a catalyst in some of the successes that have been occurring to date. So all of that just expands and becomes even better in a different configuration.
With expanded hours, not necessarily going to 24/7, could you accomplish a similar goal?
The 16 hours versus 24, what you do is you allow a little bit better access. There's still a disruption that occurs when somebody has to leave during the day and can't better plan that day. This is what Dr. Marbit talked about in terms of what a 24 shelter gives you the opportunity to do. It'd be one thing for me to know that I've got to make two appointments today, and it's required by my case manager to be at that shelter. Because shelter is not a right, it's a privilege, particularly the way this shelter is being funded. So this privilege of being in that shelter means that I have a responsibility to do something to turn my life around, not to sit on my bed or on a couch or watch TV for 24 hours a day or 16 hours a day, is to actively engage and do what I need to do to get out of my homeless situation. That's the expectation we would have for anybody in that shelter. So I need to be able to have the services and the expectations so that I can say, listen, you need to do X, Y, and Z today, and you have to report back, you have to have people sign off on this card that you did that. Otherwise, this shelter opportunity is not going to extend for you. So that's the sort of carrot that goes with running a shelter. And that's what you're going to have to migrate to beyond what we're doing now if you make this more permanent. Expectations, time limits that are driven by performance, that's what every shelter does, and that's what this shelter will have to do.
Thank you. All right. Supervisor Montgomery.
Yeah, Leo, thank you. I wanted to actually kind of follow up on Jack's question about volunteers and your comment. I may have misunderstood it. You said that you were limited to two individuals. Does that mean you can't have more than two volunteers in there at any time? Or that then cuts into the number of people who can actually stay overnight?
No, no. Well, I guess it would. I guess it would cut in because right now the access agreement says no more than 49 people in that building. So when the church groups come in to serve, typically they've been leaving off the food and we serve those two staff members. So we've been breaking the rules a few times when six volunteers come in for a half an hour to feed and then they're gone. But we would be at odds with the access agreement with kind of how we're behaving right now.
But just so I'm clear, the access agreement doesn't actually limit the number of volunteers, it just limits the total number of individuals.
Number of people.
Okay. So for example, if this board decided 75 was an appropriate number, you could have five volunteers and 70 guests?
I would think you throw that option right out the window. I don't think you tie in a temporary volunteer. If four people come in to run an AA meeting, I wouldn't want to reduce by my bed count for that hour that they're there.
So maybe I should ask Facility Services this question. That overall number limitation, is that for overnight occupancy or is it just at any time there are no more than 49 people allowed in that building? I mean, so does that mean if I go toward the building and there's already 49 people, we're out of compliance?
I'm out of compliance.
I think the current interpretation is that.
Okay.
Is that it is 49 and you're not supposed to go over.
Okay. We probably, if we take some actions today, should think about giving some direction to change that so that it's clear that that's intended for overnight occupancy rather than, you know, the Girl Scouts come in to do a sing-along and suddenly everyone has to stand outside. So, okay. Thank you. Thanks, Leo.
All right. Bridgette, does that conclude the presentation by Right Hand Auburn?
I think that Jan was going to come up to address some of the questions from Miss Montgomery, and then I was standing by to go over any of the charts or any of the assumptions to make sure if the board was so inclined to approve any of the alternatives that we have out in place. Jan?
I'm Jan Haldeman. I made out the budget for the improvements. Myself and Tom Getz are the two general contractors that will be doing the improvements, and we'd certainly welcome the $35,000 bid that you've obtained. It's, we certainly do have a contingency in this amount of money, but we are paying prevailing wage and like with the path of travels and stuff like that, I don't know if you noticed the asphalt going out to East Street, we're going to have to, yeah, we're going to have to do concrete work and asphalt, and so there are some issues. And going out to F Street, we also have to go through the fenced area. We're not sure what was in there, maybe the standby generator or something. But there's issues there, so there is a contingency in there, but of course, we're certainly willing to present invoices and whatever for our work and take competitive bids if we can get them. So if you've got any questions, I'd hope I'd answer them.
It sounds like what you're saying is that you're fairly comfortable with the $65,000 estimate for the required ADA upgrades if it should exceed 50 people.
I do.
Okay. Thanks, Jan.
Supervisor Brown, something you want to add? That's right. Okay. Thanks, Jan. At this time, we'll...
Were there any questions about the assumptions on any of the alternatives or did, I mean, did the reasons for those?
No, I think what we're going to do is we're going to take public comment, we're going to open the public, take public comment, hold a second. And then clarifying questions for both staff and the proponents can come later.
Supervisor Holmes?
The Marbit study recommended that you need government, cities, counties, business, and the faith-based community to work together on this.
Correct.
Has there been any outreach to the city of Auburn to see if they're willing to contribute to this?
Yes, there has been. We're still trying to get a third vote. But yes, and that's why if you look at the proposal that I had in, I was allowing either $45,000 or a $50,000 contribution. There's a placeholder for that because we had, both because Dr. Marbit suggested it, but also it would seem that it's an equitable proposal to have the city also participate. It's just that RHA, we don't have the ability to compel anything like that, either there or when we come and talk to you. We're asking for your help, so I don't know that we will receive it.
Have you reached out to the Auburn Chamber of Commerce as far as business organizations?
Yes, and we do have support from the Auburn Chamber, the Kiwanis Rotary has taken a vote several times to support us. When you mention these business groups, I should tell you that right now we've already raised $190,000 cash. This is coming about, I would say about 60% from private businesses and 40% from churches. So that's how it's breaking out so far that we're using for the construction that we've already done and operations.
Have you reached out to the Auburn Airport Association as far as...
Yes, and in fact, there was a statement posted supporting the shelter again by Mr. Anderson. He put it online, so I didn't try to submit it this morning. There's still social media stuff coming through, yes.
But we don't know if they have any willingness to participate in the financing.
Oh, you mean direct financing? No, they have not committed to that, although they've been invited to our fundraiser for September 10th, and we hope to see them there.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Bridgette. At this time, we will go ahead and open the public hearing regarding the modification of temporary conditional use permit. Folks who would like to address the item of the site agreement should go ahead and do so at this time as well. Please try to limit your comments to three minutes and make sure that you introduce yourself to us when you get up and start your comments.
Good morning. My name's Larry Yanni, for the record, president of the Homeowners Association of Stone Brook. I want to thank the chairman, Euler, and the board to speak today. My opposition is two-pronged. One is the proximity of the location, and the other is the accountability. Today is the first day I heard that there was actually people moving off the system into gainful employment. I'm not sure why that wasn't in the proposal, because when I read it, I was getting ready to write all about accountability. But let me address the proximity. I'm not happy about the proximity of the location based on a couple, you know, several incidences that have happened in our neighborhood and at our local school that my children go to, where individuals were caught in the kindergartner's girls' bathroom for one, and the other was at the boys' bathroom in the gym. Those are two factual incidences that I was aware of. There may be more. One of the things that I would like to ensure is that it is put in a place that can address the accountability. I'd like to see more hard facts on who is coming into the facility, who's getting employment, so there's actual, you know, diminishing returns based on our local issue. It should be, you should put yourself out of business after a while, but, you know, there's probably going to be an ongoing homeless problem, but by doing the right thing, we should be able to minimize it and have a less impact on the fiscal problem. Yeah, I think that's basically why I wanted to state and appreciate the opportunity to speak on it.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Eric Hill. The basic plan looks solid to me, but it's missing a very, a major component, and that is food. Nobody's been addressing the food. Right now, the plan is you beg restaurants, you beg churches, you get the health department to look the other way when food's done in churches' kitchens. This is a Band-Aid, it's not a plan. There needs to be a plan for the food, whether that's jail food or whatever it is, there needs to be a plan. You can't expect restaurants and churches who are already severely, you know, don't have very good budgets, you can't expect them to provide food for this shelter forever. It just can't happen. That's my point.
Thank you.
My name is Lisa Lingren, and I'm here because I'm a resident on Atwood. And I'm going to give you a little different experience than money and politics and all that garbage is what I call it. About last, well, this, last summer, in the beginning of the summer, we had some episodes with some transients coming onto the property. There was one incident where one was really drunk and yelling slurs at us, and our children were outside, and unfortunately, I had to get verbally aggressive to ask him to leave because he wouldn't leave when I was nice. Well, this past summer, I've had my daughter tested for a learning disability because she struggled in school. And little to my knowledge and very surprised, she has been diagnosed with a severe anxiety. And unfortunately, it was due to the episode of the transient coming onto the property, throwing a fit, being drunk, and negligent. So I question myself, what liability are you guys taking in knowing the type of people that are coming into the shelters? Yes, I know there's good people, but there's also several reports of sex offenders, drug users, and these days with sex offenders, they can't tell us what type of sex offender they are. And here we have several different schools. Now I have to deal with a child, we get out to go to Safeway, and I call the death grip. She's got the death grip. Anybody who gets out of their car and looks like maybe they've been working outside all day and dirty, she assumes it's a transient. To me, that's sad. That's not what I want my daughter to have the image of these type of people. I wanted to at least be able to control it a little bit, to say, okay, these people have issues. We can help them. I'm not in disagreement that we don't need a shelter, but I'm asking from the bottom of your heart to consider a child that I have to deal with that is a severe anxiety. From her eyes, can you imagine your own child and something like this, just a homeless person walking by, and she's scared to death? I ask you to review that and think about that. You know, unfortunately, deputies, if you don't know me, my name's Lisa Lingren, you will hear from me every single night at 9:00. Why? Because there's transients going through the trash cans across the street. And for my insanity, for my daughter's insanity, I will call them to come out and make them go away, because I'm going to protect my child as much as I can. Can I protect her from everything? Absolutely not. But without all the politics and all the finances, I'm asking you to consider my daughter and what she has to go through on a daily basis. You know, we, I prepare her for the people who walk out of jail and come down our street. She knows to be aware of her surroundings. She knows what, you know, they can be capable of as they go down Atwood to cash their checks. I couldn't prepare her for this homeless guy because I had no idea what was going to happen. And I know you can't prepare your child for everything in life, but I am begging you. I see no resolution as a long-term effect at another location. We can keep extending this for months and months. I want to see some resolution. I want to see a focal point of where this permanent place is going to be, because where it's at's not working. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name's Kathleen Byers. I've lived in Placer County for over 50 years. The original reason I was coming to this meeting is to make an adjustment to the amendment you made when Right Hand of Auburn asked to be reimbursed for $80,000 when everything was supposed to be at no cost to the county. But that wasn't brought up right now, so I'll bring that up later. There was no reason why the county would have put in $800,000. And this is, anyway, while checking into the agenda to see if I could address my concern, to my surprise, I find Right Hand of Auburn is requesting additional money, over $300,000. Please do not give out any more of our taxpayers to this organization. Placer County is doing plenty for the needy. There are other organizations that assist the homeless. Money can be better spent that way. Not only are they giving them a meal, shower, and a bed, now they want to expand so counselors can come to them and sit in a nice little office. How about going to a counselor's office or a physician's office like the rest of us taxpaying citizens do? I do believe in helping others, those that help themselves. Placer County has wonderful avenues to help all people, but the homeless should not be coddled. The ones that truly want help can get help. Not only are a large majority of these homeless working the system, by funding Right Hand of Auburn, you are handing them the whole system on a silver platter. Food, shelter, beds, counselors 24/7, all free. How nice. Sure beats working, paying taxes, and being responsible. It's called enabling. It does not help, it damages. The group involved seem to be so caught up in their self-gratification that the true value of the outcome of their action is clouded. We have been duped by this group enough, and again, I quote, "at no cost to the county." Please do not give them any more of our precious dollars. I am aware the county was granted, was, Placer County was, had an award, grant awarded. Please use it on established county departments and organizations that have a history and knowledge of homeless, chemical dependency, and medical issues, not just do-gooder seeking self-gratification. Later during your meeting, you're going to have wonderful groups representing stand-up, law-abiding, taxpaying citizens representing our great county, who will be requested funds as you hopefully grant their small monetary request. Please picture the faces that they represent and think, if we keep spending money on the pipe dreams of others that are going to save the alcoholic, drug user, and indigent, there will come a time that we can no longer help these fine citizen groups. Please spend our money wisely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Heather Ireland. I have been a Placer County resident since 1988. I'm also a little bit unusual in that I am an advocate for the homeless. I have actually had one-on-one experience with many of the homeless, know them by their names, recognize their faces, and there's a scenario that I would like to present to you today that I have been very actively involved in since August the 4th, when a homeless man who has a, he has a terminal illness, he is on kidney dialysis, he had been released from the hospital because he had no place to go. I found him laying on concrete, unable to get up at the, well, in a parking lot. And I stayed with him as he went to the hospital. This was again August the 4th or 5th, and I stayed with him, working on his case, trying to help him and the hospital resolve his situation by ensuring... to help him and the hospital resolve his situation by ensuring that he didn't go back out onto the street and then, you know, the revolving door in the hospital, which is very costly to taxpayers. And what I found, my firsthand experience was that helping this man and trying to find him a place was, was not only difficult, but it didn't come about. I mean, he's on the street and he's going to be forcibly removed from the only safe place he was able to find today. And regarding the shelter, because it is so limited with its capacity, I did try to get him in there, but was unable to do that, you know, because there's a great need for everyone, and there's other people that are in situations just like him that are chronically ill, and you just can't, you know, give them, they compete for those beds, and it can't, there's just not enough to accommodate everyone. For the, for the mother who had concerns about her daughter, and for the man who spoke before me who that was concerned about the bathrooms in the school or whatever facility he was talking about, I would say this. The shelter is actually a place where you can have this situation with the homeless contained. They can be monitored, they can be assisted. If they have a place, especially if this is open during the day as well, they will have a place to be, but they will not be roaming the streets. The ones that are going in and doing these things, those are the ones who have no place to go. If they need a shower, if they need to use a toilet, of course, they're going to be looking for any place that is open for them to go, and whether that's the school or the park, if, if a shelter is available for them, that's where they will be. And getting jobs for the woman who said, you know, let's get them, they should take care of themselves, get them jobs. Everything that was spoken of by the man with Volunteers of America said they can get jobs if they can have showers and if they can have access to what they need to do that. So I do hope you consider all of that and that people understand this other side. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ramona Brockman, Loomis, California. And my concern is more really just of a technical nature. I do support the need to assist homeless and the homeless issue in Placer County. The study that was mentioned earlier did demonstrate there was definite need to look at this situation and come up with appropriate plans. But my technical concern is a legal issue regarding the environmental clearance for this project, as it involves a historic structure on the DeWitt campus. The use of Section 15301 of SEQA is a categorical exemption, and it is not appropriate because categorical exemptions cannot be used for historic properties. As you may or may not know, National Register nomination of historic places has been prepared and submitted for the DeWitt General Hospital buildings. So I question the use of Section 15301 as being appropriate environmental clearance. So if there's some other clearance necessary that would need to be looked into, again, I'm not necessarily against this facility being used as a homeless shelter. And my last concern then, as it is on a, in a historic structure, would do with the structural changes, the proposed structural changes, especially since this is a temporary situation or it's been approved as a temporary housing. I'd like to be, look more into the structural changes so that they are not necessarily permanent, and it sounds like most of them are not necessarily, with the exception of an additional exit being added, and that would be an impact on a historic structure. And so I just basically want to clarify that all i's are dotted and t's are crossed in the environmental clearance category, considering it is up for National Register nomination. And lastly, just to kind of be more of a long-term planning emphasis for all of the structures here at DeWitt, is that National Register listing can be a great benefit to these structures as they would not need to necessarily meet current building codes. If it's a historic structure and on the National Register, it has its own set of building codes that are much more relaxed, that it, that it would qualify for, as well as they would qualify for historic preservation and restoration funds. So funding to rehabilitate these buildings would also be more available. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman Euler, fellow supervisors, thank you for this opportunity to address you. I'm Susan Farrington. I'm the president of the Homeless Resource Council of the Sierras, and I have a letter to bring to your attention today. Dear board members, homelessness is a complex problem that requires a broad multifaceted response by dozens of agencies and partners, all working in tandem, each bringing conceptual plans, financial supports, and the innate ability to remain focused on solutions. As the HUD recognized continuum of care for Placer and Nevada counties, the Homeless Resource Council of the Sierras is mandated to find creative and innovative ways to collaborate with both traditional and non-traditional partners in an effort to prevent and end homelessness in Placer and Nevada counties. The HRCS has taken a lead role in developing and implementing four strategy groups, as recommended by the Marbit Report, that are focused on collaborative strategic planning process to address the areas that Marbit pointed out: permanent affordable housing, homelessness management information system, and 24/7 shelters in Auburn and in South Placer. This coordinated, focused, systemic plan will identify gaps in services and coordinate an entry system that will strengthen the existing resource network that we have and address the needs of those that we serve. As the planning process is still in its infancy, it's premature for HRCS to make a recommendation on any particular agency or program to operate a 24/7 shelter program. We do, however, concur with the Marbit Report that to develop a 24/7 commensurar shelter complete with wraparound services and comprehensive case management in both the Auburn area and in South Placer is the best way to go. While housing is the first step for individuals, we recognize the need for those support services to be a priority in making any efforts around dealing with the homeless situation really possible to resolve the situations. The Homeless Resource Council of the Sierras is the continuum of, as the continuum of care is all too familiar with the barriers that we face in Placer County to access the necessary services for this population. With that, the HRCS Board of Directors supports due diligence and recommends a competitive solicitation process, including a request for proposal to determine the most effective and efficient providers for services and cost benefits to the county, should the county choose to use any public funds in the homeless efforts. As your continuum of care lead, we are in favor in further growth and expansion of homeless services in Placer County, and I would like to lend our support in any efforts that you should have. And please, if you have any questions for me or of the Homeless Resource Council of the Sierras, we are at your service. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Do you want to bring in a page? Be okay if I?
Yes, please. Give that to the board. Thank you so much. Thank you for joining us today. Appreciate you being here.
Good afternoon. My name is Greg Sorrello. I'm an Auburn resident and I'm a volunteer for Right Hand Auburn. I coordinate all the food services at the shelter, the dinners. And I need to clarify a point. Every meal served at the shelter has been cooked at a certified kitchen. I'm working with Curtis Sumwell very closely. He's the program manager at Environmental Health. He has been wonderful, by the way. He's working with us closely to get these kitchens inspected quickly, and he's also waiving the fees for these inspections. We're working with him to have food safety managers certified. They're required at every kitchen during the preparation of meals. He has set up a class just for us in September so we can get these food safety managers certified, so we can comply with the law. We are doing everything we can, and Curtis and Diane Gerike have been working with us to do this. We have, we don't just have churches involved. We have the Elks, we have the Ridge, we have Oakwood Village Assisted Living. We're bringing in all components of the community. So I need to clarify this information for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Pablo Suez, and I was, I was not going to speak, but some of the people that come over here and they don't want their tax money spent on the shelter. I am one of the thousands of people in Placer County that live in private roads. This coming December 10th, I will be writing a check, which I might as well burn because they're not going to give me anything in return. We are on a road we built, on a road we maintain, unseptic, unwell, and we see the sheriff when somebody calls, there's no patrols. The fire department, when there's a fire, which fortunately hasn't been many. So since we are expressing our wishes as to where our money is to be spent or not spent, I request that my tax dollars, since I'm not even going to get a library, Mr. Holmes, I mean, that was the last best age of a penny out of my thousands of dollars, I'm requesting that the money that I'm going to write a check for come December 10th be donated to the shelter. Thank you.
We'll be sure to let the sheriff and the district attorney know of your thoughts.
Hello, gentlemen. My name's Robert Craden, ma'am. I'm a, I am a resident of the shelter, and I'm here in support of the shelter. I've wreaked havoc in this community for a long time and recently got out of prison and decided it's time to give something back, which is why I'm at the shelter. This place needs to work, it needs to continue to do its work, and without it, I don't know where I'd be. There was something brought up about sexual offenders. There are no sexual offenders there. They've all been filtered out. They're all gone. This is a place of positive works for the people that are there and for the community as a whole. We obviously know there's a problem with the homeless, and we need to continue to address it by expansion. That's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Jeffrey Baxter. I'm a resident of this facility. Without this facility, I'd either be dead or I'd be back in prison. I recently got out of prison, February 28th. I was planted on the, on the park lawn for two and a half months, hated every day of it. Leo came to me and asked me if I wanted to come to the shelter. I've had nothing but blessings since then. I've got a safe place to go, as many other homeless have. We have meals, we have showers. It's been nothing but a blessing. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Richard Azavito. I'm a new physician, and I've been in business since 1978. But before that, I was a probation officer in this county, working, as you know, from '58 to '78, I was assistant probation officer, started a lot of the drug programs, a lot of the counseling programs, and I helped people for hopefully 20 years and hopefully got a lot of them turned around. So when Father Mike came and said, "We want the business community to be involved," I said, "Why not? I should be involved." And I think that it meant writing checks, which I can do now, thank God. So I think that you've heard from Leo that the program has been running since, for 77 days, and it's been successful. I think the program needs more help. We are willing to continue to work with the program and continue to write checks, but we need your help. Now, we're being told, well, we can't afford to do this. We can't afford not to do it. So I'm asking your support to help us to get the program to continue to go on. Thank you.
Thank you. So at this time, I always see one other person standing up to speak. How many? Okay.
My name is Juliana Wiseman. I have been, worked in programming and funding development since December of 1990, Mr. Duran. I'm a non-campus volunteer. I work from my home computer for Right Hand Auburn as a volunteer. Thank you for your time.
I'm Roger Wick, neighbor in the Stone Brook housing area, and we want to have it continue as a volunteer-only, that the government not be involved in the financial aspect of it, to keep it a size that volunteers can manage and keep it hands-on in that sense.
Thank you.
Jack Sanchez, Auburn resident. Jennifer and gentlemen, good afternoon. I'm here to talk a little bit about the effect of homelessness on the environment, which I'm sure you're well aware of, but I want to point this out for the discussion. My first concern, Placer County, is always with what other activities negatively impact the environment generally and waterways specifically. Caring for those who really cannot care for themselves is the first law of civilization. "The greatness of America is in how it takes care of the weakest, of its weakest members," said Bill Federer. However, taking care of those who cannot take care of themselves enhances not just them, but the greater good, and that's what I'm speaking in favor of today. SARSIS, Save Auburn Ravine Salmon and Steelhead, has had to remove untold amounts of debris from Auburn Ravine and from its tributaries. North Ravine, the largest tributary of Auburn Ravine, is being restored through a community effort with untold amounts of debris being taken out and being refreshed and being allowed to flow again to, it's a Steelhead Habitat stream, one of the rare ones in our county. I was just contacted, I have just contacted PCWA about a complaint that I received about squatters, quote, the exact word, dumping so much debris into Georges Creek, which is one of the tributaries of the Auburn Ravine that flows under Taylor Road over in Newcastle, that the debris was gathering against the railings that protect the tunnel, so the water was completely flowing over the road. So we've talked about, Ken talked about in great detail, that moving, what you did, moving the people from DeWitt, where are they going to go? They're going to go down to your park, they're going to go down to the Auburn Ravine, they're going to go down to North Ravine. That's no solution whatsoever, it's just a visual nicety, but it's not, you all know that, we all know that. So the only way to enhance the quality of life in our county is to go along with what we've started here, and then to ultimately create in some way a permanent shelter for the, those people that are going to be homeless all their lives without our help. And there's a hardcore of homeless that needs our help. You folks all competed very diligently for these jobs. Your job is to take care of the greater good. So please create a permanent, fully-funded shelter for the weakest members of our community, if not for them, then for us, and I know it's not an easy job, that's what you're elected for. You're the best board of supervisors in the state of California, as I've said, what, three times to you in public address? And also, we're one of the richest counties. So do it! Thank you.
My name is Barbara Ogden. I'm a member of the Auburn Area Homeless Forum, and we formed about three years ago, and since that time, I have spent countless hours on the computer studying what other communities and other states do for the homeless. And I just want to, I wasn't planning to speak, but I just have to impart what I have learned. And most importantly, it's time to stop talking about the homeless and start doing something for them and with them, anyway. Shelters are not the answer, but at this point in time, in this community, a 24/7 shelter is the only way to go. But I do agree with the supervisors who said they don't want to pour a pile of money into it because it's not, we hope to not have it there forever. I think we need to have it, I think we need to expand it to the maximum number that can be there. I don't see any reason for having it seasonal. You've got a building, you've got a shelter, something that makes them more comfortable, healthier, keeps them out of trouble, keeps them from roaming the community. Why would you turn them out because of a certain temperature or a certain season? That, I just don't understand that. So I'd like 24/7 year-round. I think that for those who think that homeless are just disgusting individuals and should get a life, the 24/7 definitely is a great way to handle it initially until we're able to have actual housing. For those who think it's a waste of taxpayer money, of all the For those who think it's a waste of taxpayer money, of all the organizations and the homeless facilities that I've learned about, and I have two big fat binders if anybody ever wants more information, I have never, ever, once read anything other than an enormous savings of tax dollars once you have housed the homeless, and that includes when you start with a 24/7. But housing the homeless gets them on their way. You've seen some small inroads into helping them. I was really pleased to hear those who have gotten out of the shelter and had their lives changed. That can happen to the nth degree when you're really working on it and have wonderful facilities. So you're saving tax dollars. You're getting them out from under. The other thing is, I'd like, for those of you with a pen in hand, I'd like you to just Google a couple of places that will give you a good idea of what homeless housing looks like, it feels like, and what it does. I've visited one, which is in Marin County. My son lives in Novato, and he told me about it, when his next-door neighbors had their big anniversary party there. And Novato has a place called Homeward Bound. They have some housing in Mill Valley, some that's spread around, but the one I went to was in Novato, out of the old Air Force Base. Incidentally, free land is really important. Anyway, look up Homeward Bound in Marin County. Look up Abode homeless, let's see, what's it called? Homeless, just Abode in Fremont area for homeless. That's a really good one. There's another one in Charlotte, North Carolina, called something to do with hope. Anyway, if you just Google Charlotte, North Carolina homeless project, you will get a really nice write-up about, and not very long, about what is done there. Okay? I hope you will look up those things.
I actually have materials from Ms. Ogden that I can share with the board if anyone is interested.
Oh, thank you.
I'm Pat Maxwell. I was born and raised in this county. And I've seen this homeless thing been going on for 67 years that I've been alive. It never goes away. You know, you can kick it this way, kick it that way, call it whatever you want, but it's homeless, you know? And it's like the hobo camps or the guy gets burned out of his house. He lives in his basement, covers himself up with tarps and stuff, you know? I've seen him where they live. I know who they were, you know? And you go out to DeWitt, and you meet some of them people, and they're born and raised in Placer County. Ain't that amazing? You know, and they're down on their luck, and they're kicked around. Well, you know, you can only kick them around so long before, God, they're going to have to get bruised or cut or something. But, you know, 67 years, and we still ain't found a solution. The solution is given a damn about them, you know? And little humanity would go a long way if, you know, all you got to do is put your hand out. Gary Mappa asked me to help him clean up when they moved them out last, a couple of weeks ago. So, yeah, I had a truck, and yeah, no problem. That's where I met him, you know? Started meeting the people that were actually from this area. Everybody says, you know, they come from other counties, other states and stuff. Bull. They come from here. And cleaned up all the trash, took it to the dumpster and everything, but what did we solve? What did we solve? You were there. You worked your butt off, you know? Now, I'll give her a hand. I guess first politician I've ever seen work. Not saying you guys don't work, but all I see is people sitting. I don't see anybody moving. I don't see anybody doing a solution for this problem. And if we don't come up with a solution, it's going to be here next week. It's going to be here next year, you know? You've got to do something. Designate some land. Donate it. Get it donated by private sources. Take it out of the government's hand, you know? If the private sector, you know, wants to do it, let's do it. It's, you know, you got enough people that will volunteer, you know? If you can get bills passed, you can get your permits, you can get this, you can get that. Yeah, let them build their life. Let's not do it. Let's give it to them, you know? Easy solution, you know? Donate some land to them, some buildings that are torn down or messed up, whatever, you know? They can refurbish. Donations can come from private parties and not from the taxpayer. But the thing is, until everybody gets together and looks at this problem, ain't nothing going to happen. Thank you.
All right. Once again, I'm seeing one person now and another. No? All right. Yeah, if we just feed the queue, as you see folks, the line diminishing, you want to just keep feeding the queue, that'd be great. All right, go ahead, please.
Anita Toller. I'm also a resident at the shelter. I'm new to this county. I've been here for about two and a half years. I relocated from Los Angeles County, South Fernando Valley. It's a long story. I am not mentally ill. I'm not an addict, but I faced financial dilemmas and problems after the death of my mother and my daughter suffering from cancer. So here I am. Never thought I would be in this position. At one point, I was like these gentlemen. I have a master's degree in public administration, but I am now here. There's good, there's bad on both sides, but the one thing I thought about when I was listening to everybody is Ronald Reagan and Jerry Brown. If you remember, those who are my age, I'm 65, and that's a large part of the reason why I'm here, because 65 is not necessarily a popular number with resumes these days. It takes a long time to go out there and find employment. In fact, if you're familiar with AARP's study, it takes someone my age 55 months, 55 months to find employment. And that's if you're already working. So it does take some energy. Also, too, we were talking about some of the folks that work at the shelter. They're working a minimum wage of $9 an hour. They're maybe only getting three to four days of work at four hours a day. You can't possibly get housing or live on that alone. You just simply cannot do it. The statistics are there. We have people that are out there working. They're trying to get ahead. They're trying to move forward, but it's a challenge right now. Also, I respect your research with Los Angeles County, but LA County and Placer County are two very different counties. We have a lot of resources in Los Angeles that we don't have here in Placer, and that makes it very, very tough. I mean, I was surprised at how just the transportation system alone works. It's very, very limited. So the options, if you were to work at night, transportation ends at seven or eight, it's going to be tough for you to even keep a job. I have a vehicle. I have some resources. I don't have CalPERS. I don't have my 457 because I tried my hand at the consulting business. It's gone, but I do have the old-fashioned social security retirement system that I can fall back on. And so does my daughter have something. At any rate, having said that, thinking about all those thoughts, two things came to mind: Jerry Brown and Ronald Reagan, and also the Messiah. The Messiah said, "We will always have the poor. We are always going to have the poor." Ronald Reagan changed the laws, and he no longer provided mental health care services for those that need it. Jerry Brown said, "Because we no longer do the things that we do as families, we are not taking care of our family members who need help." So we're always going to be having these problems. We need to find a way to remedy the issues, not just by providing a shelter, but for example, I know that there are smart and finalists coming in. They're going to have 50 jobs coming up. I don't know whether the city has broached them on providing a certain set aside amount, like maybe five or 10 jobs for people that are at the shelter. I mean, we used to do that under the CEDAR programs and the other activities that we used to conduct to improve things. So I, well, I come out of a redevelopment background. I would like to see us do more economic development things to help all these folks, not just me, but the folks who really need help. I don't, I think it's a challenge for Placer. It's something new, and I'm sure we can get out there as a team and do it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Grant, you want to?
Yeah, I'd like to present a proposal, a motion.
Okay, let's, we have two people standing up here. We're going to take these two folks, and then we're going to shut up. I'll have a comment at this point, and we'll bring it back to the board for our discussion. Go ahead, sir.
Good morning, supervisors.
Afternoon. That's okay.
When I, I've heard all too often, I don't think people understand the difference between the transient and homeless. And also, when I hear the word homeless, we should put in front of that, Auburn's homeless because this shelter is designated for only Auburnites. But it's the transients, which are much more than our homeless that are problematic, and I understand that. The reason why they come to this town, because known throughout the transient community, Auburn gives freely. We've asked for that, the transient problem. But when I hear that with a shelter, they're going to come by the hundreds into town, that's the transients. They're here, our homeless. They don't go out of town. They come back in town, and they want the leg up. They want to get back. But I think that we lump them together, though they are together in many respects, and all exhibit concerning and problematic with drugs and what have you. Try waking up on the streets of your own town, and you're not going to do something like that. It's unfortunate. Also, the homeless, when we think that they have this choice, it's not a choice. They diminish mentally. They have serious mental problems. The longer they stay, it only gets worse. So when we talk about our homeless or the homeless, we should always put in front of it, these are Auburnites. They were once our neighbors one time. As far as 24/7, it would be, you could advance them a lot more into the services that they need with a 24/7. Also, 47 bunks are available. If we open up just a minimal amount of that, like to 70 or the 80, we'll actually capture the three or four that they're saying every night that are turned away, the Auburnites that are turned away. We'll eliminate, we'll get them to the shelter, and what'll appear more is the transients that we do have to deal with in this town. We have a 20-year history of that. Other city planners know to link a shelter to the services that'll get them back in. So it comes into District 3. And I do understand from talking to folks in District 3 that I really thought they were all against a shelter, and many of them may be, but I hear there's a tremendous amount of people in District 3 that do want the shelter. So our difficulty lies in District 3 keeping up neighborhood watch. The sheriff's department can't be over there all the time, and one understands that. So neighborhood watchers will help protect their own interest. I hope that they do that. Hey, just in time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to take this gentleman and the lady that just got in line. I guess you'll be the last speaker. We'll go ahead and allow for the two more, and then we'll be done. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. And I do want to say thank you. I think this board actually should be commended for the fact that we're even standing here today. I've had the opportunity of serving-
Sir, sir, I need your name to the record. I appreciate the compliment, but we-
Larry Farina.
Thank you.
Larry Farina. I am a lifelong member, fifth-generation Placer County member. I've had the opportunity of serving this board at the pleasure of this board on the planning commission in 2007, 2008. One of the things I recall about that experience was that we had to review and approve a housing element in 2008. In that housing element was a study that cited in 2004, there was a 10-year plan to end homelessness. I remember looking at it and kind of chuckling to myself because I thought it's a great idea, but it's probably never going to happen. The reality is, it is never going to happen. But it's 2015. This is the first board that has ever even given an opportunity to try and stop something from happening. You gave Right Hand Auburn an opportunity to change the future. You gave them a 90-day opportunity. They've had 78 days to operate. In that 78 days, they have established that there is a need for a shelter. They have established that they have a successful management program for that shelter. They have had successes in helping people move through that shelter in 78 days to find employment, to better their lives. That's what the shelter is about. It's about bettering people's lives. It's not about coddling people. It's about helping people get off the streets, about helping them move into normal society. There's been a lot of comments about crime and transients and homelessness. The reality is that those who are in a homeless shelter are not out at night committing crimes. That's a simple fact. They have a bed to sleep in. There was an article several months ago about someone who was arrested in the encampment who had items that were stolen from the county vehicles. You're not going to find that in a homeless shelter. They're not out at night stealing things from the county vehicles. They're not in people's backyards. They're not camping out in the bushes. They're provided an opportunity to better themselves. They're provided a bed and a shower and a way to do that. I want to encourage you to take the opportunity to continue what you started. Jennifer mentioned, and a very good concern, not wanting to necessarily fund this 75-year-old building and put in a whole lot of money into it. That's completely understandable. I think it also needs to be understood, though, that the people, the business community, the faith-based organizations, the people who are behind this so far financially have already put in more money than they're asking for the county to bring into the pot right now, into your 75-year-old buildings. That's how much they believe in it. The Marbert Report recommends this type of shelter. He said, "Yes, this is a good temporary location." But in that, he also recommends that we have the faith-based community, the business people, the business communities, the business organizations, and the county and city governments participating financially. I think it's time for the county and city to participate financially. We've seen in 78 days a program that can work. Let's give it another year to establish itself and then figure out what we can do from there. Thank you very much.
Okay, ma'am, you have the last word on this topic for the public?
Thank you so much. My name is Elizabeth Sands, and I do volunteer with Right Hand Auburn. But I'd also like to just share a thought as a resident of the city of Auburn proper and also with children that go to St. Joseph's Catholic School. All three of us have volunteered within the shelter. My seven-year-old, my 11-year-old have met many of these faces that were here earlier and felt safe in the shelter. Right Hand Auburn can only control the four walls that you've been generous in giving us to this date, and we hope can continue, but within those four walls, it's only but one piece of the bigger puzzle, and I understand that as a community member. I do understand there are pluses and minuses in homelessness as the whole, but I get a little emotional to know that my daughter, when she brings popsicles and knows some of the shelter residents by name, she is that hand of hope. And Right Hand of Auburn is only trying to aid and serve the bigger issue of homelessness right now in its time of need in order to give all of the county time to work on their further project and their further plan. So thank you for allowing me to be a part of that, and hopefully Right Hand of Auburn and Volunteers of America can continue. Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to go ahead and close public hearing at this point and bring it back to the board for, first, any questions of staff or of Right Hand Auburn or Volunteers of America based on what we've heard. Supervisor, can we get any questions of staff or?
Yeah, I'm not sure who is the appropriate person to answer this question, but the question of registered sex offenders came up. What is the process for screening? That's a Leo question.
We create a master roster of everybody who's served the shelter, and that's available for the sheriffs to review and to notify us that somebody may be on the radar that we didn't pick up. We did that about two and a half to three weeks into the shelter operation, and that's where everybody that is no longer allowed to stay at the shelter came up. Also, the 290s are required to register with the sheriff's department so they can cross-check where they're staying. So it's a mutual involved activity.
So you provide names to the sheriff's department, who then verify if they are sex offenders or not, and then they let you know?
Yeah, we've agreed to share those master rosters so they can cross-check that, yes.
Okay. Another question that has come up was, and I know that I've talked about this with Bridget in the past, is this idea about planning for food sustainability long-term. And one of the things that I had suggested was taking a look at a contract with probation. Our probation department actually, I think, prepares something crazy like 9,000 meals a week for not just our jail, but a lot of other- a week for not just our jail, but a lot of other entities. Have you explored that, just as, you know, what I would consider a more ongoing and reliable source of food, rather than hoping that the ridge can come through, or, you know, Maria's tacos, or whatever?
Yeah, calling out for pizza, an hour early?
Yeah.
Yes. We did. I think it was last week of July, I met with a group of folks from, who provide the food, and I explained what we had been doing from a community standpoint, and that Greg had, you know, basically set up a calendar of what nights various volunteer groups were going to be doing dinners. And what we had agreed to do was to wait until after the board voted today. But, but they, jail folks even offered, that's what I call it, I mean, the group from the county, to work with our schedule. So, for instance, if we could move all of our volunteers for the first two weeks or the last two weeks of the month, then they would provide meals adjacent to that. There is some savings. And, you know, when we get down to talking about the way the budgets have been set up, you will see there's a line item for food. That assumes purchase of 100% of it, because the food number is very malleable right now. Like I said, we've got between 12 and 14 nights a month that are completely covered, and we have promises for more nights, so I was unable to make a fixed number for that. So, that's, that's why that number should come down, as we have practical experience. But yes, that would work, we can do that.
Okay, excellent. I just think it seems to me like it's a really logical way to have a much more sustainable and reliable food source, rather than, you know, to quote Blanche Dubois, relying on the kindness of strangers.
Well, we also did want to have the community involved for all of the, the social purposes that are behind trying to make this a success, too. But you're right, it makes life a lot easier not to have to worry about it every night.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you very much. Trying to think if I have anything else specific. Oh, one thing I did want to mention is, the question of crime, you know, and are these criminals who are, who are staying in the shelter came up. I imposed upon both Volunteers of America and the Sheriff's Department to cross-compare their own lists, so the 120 people who have stayed in the shelter versus the folks who have been booked into our jail since June 1. I was only able to get two full months, June 1, through the end of July. But in that timeframe, there were seven individuals who were guests at the shelter, who were arrested and booked into the jail for something. Most of them are, you know, misdemeanors, drunk in public. But, you know, I think it's, there's a perception that there are hundreds and hundreds of these people staying in the shelter. Of course, we haven't had hundreds and hundreds of people staying in the shelter, but there's a perception that there's this huge number of people staying in the shelter who are being arrested and booked. And indeed, I was actually pleasantly surprised to see that there appear to be seven individuals in that two-month timeframe. And it, it may actually only be six, because there was one individual who gave two very similar names, and so we actually think that's the same person. So, just as a heads up.
Okay.
Well- Just add to that, of the 120 that you see, some of those 120 have only been there once, or maybe three times, and they also could have been considered those that would be arrested. And my staff told me that what they do is, every new person that comes in, and we're averaging about two to three to four new people a week, they actually onsite run the federal background check, because we have the internet service there now. So, the staff are doing that on a nightly basis.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Supervisor Holmes, you had a question?
Well, it's no surprise to anyone here that I've been skeptical of this from the start. And the reason why is not because I don't have a heart for the homeless, it's because now we're talking about $400,000 free now until the end of March 31st. But part of that discussion was that this is temporary until we find a more suitable permanent location. And has anybody been looking at any other location, either in Auburn or Roseville, for a permanent location? Is there anybody working towards that? Mr. Brown?
Jeff Brown, your Health and Human Services Director. We've just been convening meetings to deal with some of the recommendations from the Marbut Report. Last week, we held our first meeting of the Auburn Group to look at a 24/7 shelter. We're gonna be meeting again in two weeks, and we're actually going to be looking at potential sites. We expect the process will take several months, and then at, at the conclusion of the process, we will be coming back to your board to share our results.
Do you think those, that report will come back before March 31st of 2016?
Yes.
All right.
Yes, we will.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Yeah. Hold on, before you, before you run away, you've triggered a whole series of questions up here, and my board is, has lit up. Supervisor Wagan.
Jeff, could you comment on the extent to which you've looked at this budget? And I know email exchange that we had, that you provided me information as it relates to what we're funding with the Gathering Inn, and, and how that, where we are and what we're considering today fits into your expectation as we go forward with a more thorough and complete review of this issue?
So, I have two points of comparison. First, we ran, we ran the proposal on the budget by Dr. Marbut, who responded just a day ago, and he thought the costs looked reasonable, I guess compared to other programs that he's looked at. When he was here making his presentation in April, he remarked that he thought the cost to, a bare-bones 24/7 shelter would cost about $30 per person or per bed per day. The proposal, there's three options here, and the first option, which is a 24/7 shelter for 47 individuals, prices out at about $39 per bed per day. The County of Orange is also struggling with this issue about what to do to better serve its homeless population. They just completed a study. They're looking at opening a 24/7 shelter site with 200 beds and a day center. And, and when they looked at costs around the US, they estimated that for bare-bones would be $25 per person per day, up to $75 per person per day, the difference being the amount of services that are provided onsite. And so, when they cost, did out a program, very similar, except much larger, 200 beds, they counted on the services to be provided by nonprofits in the county and the cities. Their cost, that they're estimating, is about $35 per day. And they're only providing two meals per day. So, if you look at the difference in cost, each meal prices out at just slightly less or slightly more than $3 a day. So, certainly the costs that have been proposed by Right Hand Auburn certainly correlate very well with, with Orange County, and certainly, again, correlate within the numbers that Dr. Marbut provided us with.
And have you sort of extended that analysis as it relates to how that might affect the partnership we have with the Gathering Inn, and what strategically, how we might better address this whole question if we in fact continued that philosophy in the southern part of our county?
Yeah. I, I know the Gathering Inn is certainly interested in providing more services. Funding has been a limitation in the past, and we're actually having a meeting later this week to, as a result of the Marbut Report, to start to explore what it would take to have a true 24/7 shelter in South County. Gathering Inn will be at the table for that presentation, and I'm sure that any enhancement over what they have in place will certainly require more resources.
Supervisor Montgomery, your light's back on.
My light is back on. It's not a question for you, Jeff, so you're off the hook. Thank you. And I, I just wanted to respond to Supervisor Holmes' question about, is there anybody doing anything to identify other sites? I actually had a meeting last week with our GIS specialist from Placer County to ask to create a preliminary map countywide for all of us that identifies the zoning in which a shelter use is currently legally allowable, and then to put in some parameters as well. So, the 2,000 feet from, you know, schools and churches and parks on transportation corridors, because people need transportation. Most folks aren't as fortunate as the, the woman who relocated here from Los Angeles only to become homeless, she's got a car. So, you know, there's a number of parameters that we looked at, those kind of exclusion zones for state law for, for sex offenders, transportation corridors, access to county services through those transportation corridors. And then things just as simple as, is there, is there a grocery store anywhere near them? Is there a drugstore so that people are, you know, if they're prescribed meds, they can go pick them up reasonably? I'm hoping that we'll have a map that we can, that I'm gonna present to our CEO preliminarily, because I think we do need to take a global look at this. Dr. Marbut was very clear that we can't build one shelter to serve all our needs in Placer County, but that we need to really understand that there are regional needs that are different. So, we, we need to do exactly as you've suggested, and find those places that are appropriate. But in the meantime, we've got to get from here to there, so.
And just to add to what Jennifer was talking about, Jim, I'm working on a concept right now down in the Roseville unincorporated area that would encompass transitional housing, would encompass a very large building that would house different types of services there, possibly a food closet, possibly a clothing closet, job training, those kinds of things. So, you know, those are the, so it's not just we're beating you up with this up here, it's, other things are happening, and I think we're all just trying to, to get in sync with this issue and get our arms around it. So, and this is gonna lead into what I'm gonna, gonna say about where I think, what I think I'm comfortable with. You know, when I came into this meeting, I was dead-set against 24/7, but, and this will show you how, and I don't, I don't change my mind that often, but, but, but I think the, the lady that came in talking about her daughter really resonated with me, and I started thinking during the period of time, well, if it's 24/7, at least I know my guy's not walking around out there in the neighborhood. And another gentleman said the same, the same thing. So, so I think my, I, I think for the short term, I, I can go now with 24/7 up until that March period of time, but I still think we need to flesh out the conditions. I know there's a condition of what, what we have, how many people can be in there at a certain period of time, what the actual number is, you know, is it 75? Is it larger than 75? I mean, I think that's still an unknown.
Let me just address that, so that you know why there's the difference, because I know the documents say both 90 and 75. The, the 75 to 78 number that you see, it assumes that RHA is gonna move in independent beds and a partition for those folks. If we go to 90, it would be going on the top bunks, and Leo can talk a little bit more about this, but there was a concern about the folks who are gonna be there 24/7 in the daytime, and you'd just be bringing folks in at night, and they might not mesh the communities. If it's really 24/7 with enough people, I mean, in other words, 70, 80, or the higher number, then these are all people who are gonna be working a plan. So, the, the social contiguity of the folks is not as big an issue, but Leo, if I'm not saying it right. Okay, I covered it right.
I want to let Supervisor Duran continue his-
I'm sorry.
Yeah, thank you. So, so I'm okay with, with now, you know, going up, going up to that number and perhaps even more, but I would really like staff to work with Right Hand on the numbers piece, because I think that's very important for all of us, to understand exactly what the costs are and what, and give us a recommendation of what that percentage should be. I've heard some jurisdictions talk about when they're gonna donate, it's, they're gonna donate in the percentage of what they give, they donate in their traffic for building roads and that kind of thing. But I do think what we don't want to do is, we don't want to get so far into this to where we're the only player. And we don't have that ability to go to the Sutter or to the other hospital or to the city for their piece in this as well. So, I think we, that needs to be sorted out. So, so my motion would be that we do go to a minimum of 75, we can go 24/7, but as far as the numbers piece, we need to have that brought back, you know, within the next 30 days, or however long it takes for you, for staff to drill down on those numbers and bring us back a recommendation, based on what you've seen from Right Hand Auburn. And again, with the understanding that we want to limit our ability to make those upgrades that make this a more permanent situation, because we've made commitments that the permanent situation is out there somewhere. It's not in the camps. And I think I can get my head around that. I think that'll, that, that we can at least identify that those folks that are in the program are locked up tidy at night and during the day, and they're not walking around during the, during the daytime, and with the closure of, of the camping area out there, we'll come back and march and have, have this discussion again, as far as where we are. And I, I'd feel comfortable with that. So-
Okay, well, we have a motion then on the table. Do we have a second?
I have a question as to the, the maker's motion. I, I just want to be clear. So, you're proposing that we extend through the end of March, so the completion of the one-year conditional use permit term?
Correct.
Increase capacity to 75 individuals?
A minimum of 75, not knowing whether or not there may be more, if staff says that, you know, that it meets all of our criteria.
Okay. And then expanded hours to 24/7 operation?
Exactly.
What about the issue of onsite storage of personal belongings?
I don't, that's something I think that needs to come back, as far as how they're gonna resolve that.
Okay. I will second your motion in that case.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, so under discussion.
Mr. Chairman, if I could ask for a clarification. Mr. Duran, is your motion as to the site access agreement or to the land use entitlements?
It, it, it adds to the site access.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, under discussion, Supervisor Holmes?
Oh, I just want to know if that motion included participation, financial consideration from the City of Auburn, since we're helping them out as well.
Well, I think what, what encompassed in the motion is a recommendation to staff to recommend to us what our percentage should be, so we leave that option available for them. I, I can't make a motion that says that Auburn has to pay. I know that, that Jen and I have had, had initial 30,000-foot discussions with them. I would hope that, that based on those discussions, that they would seriously think about our investment that we're making in here to the greater region, that they would have a more serious discussion about it than they've had so far.
So, you would expect that to be part of the, what staff brings back?
I would expect that, yes.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, Supervisor Holmes? Okay, Supervisor Wagan.
I was just gonna, I was just gonna check if the, if the motion included the allowance of food storage preparation and onsite counseling, medical assistance.
Yes, it did. And again, and again, I would like, I would like that information to come back with what services are gonna be provided. I know that Jeff Brown and his, his shop will coordinate with, with Ken's shop to kind of let us know what exactly is going to be in the program, so.
Okay, and the maker, the second concurs with the motion, or modification of the motion?
The, the second does, if I understand it, to include at this time not attaching any specific dollar amounts to that?
Exactly.
That's what we're asking county to come back with?
That's what I, yeah, yeah.
Yes.
I'm still, I mean, the numbers are, are moving target right now. I think after this meeting, since we have some direction, they'll settle down even more, and staff can bring us back their best estimate there.
Okay. Supervisor Wagan?
Some comments of, and particularly for staff, I guess, as we move forward on this year. I'm, I'm good with the motion, as I understand it. So, specifically, I have no problems with Part 4A, 1 and 2, as per the agenda. I am not willing to support any county additional financial participation at this particular point in time. And I want to explain that a little bit, so that as we go forward, get homework done for me, that'll be helpful as I develop my position. So, you know, we started down this journey looking at a countywide issue, and I want it to continue that way. So, obviously, some folks from Auburn stepped up to the plate and have done a huge amount to participate and, and bring us to the table, if you will, more aggressively than we probably would have otherwise timeframe-wise. But I want that holistic, strategic, long-term perspective. Similarly, I'm afraid that we get started too much, particularly one place, that this is not the right site, that we have too much invested, and it gets too difficult to walk away from that. That happens sometimes in politics. So, for the public especially, county has an extremely strong fiscal position. And we have that, because over all these years, we're extremely exhaustive in the way that we review our numbers. And typically, that gets vetted up from the departments. Sometimes there are issues, of course, that, that the board will, will start. But it's reviewed thoroughly from a fiscal perspective at the county exec level. And we particularly look thoroughly at one-time expenditures versus ongoing costs to the county, because there are trade-offs, obviously, for those resources. So, if we- If we can't find funding sources for these things, they constrain other investments that we could be making in the county. Jack knows, he and I had a very brief conversation with a well-positioned representative from Sutter on this issue. There seemed to be extremely good interest, strong interest on their part, to talk about this cost share. Jack did some great research, bringing to the table the cost overall to society, including the county. You know, we only have control over the county budget, although we can cause a lot of conversations to occur. So I want that level of exhaustive research put into both the finance and the strategy as we move forward with all of this countywide to make sure that we have an intelligent and best-positioned plan to go forward.
Okay. Supervisor Duran, your light is still on.
Oh, sorry.
That's right. So Supervisor Holmes?
Oh, I just want to say, as I've said before many times, I've been skeptical about this, but I'm going to go agree with the motion based on Supervisor Waggon's concerns as well because I share those concerns.
I think the best way to focus the motion at this point is that the motion is directed to the temporary conditional use permit to determine that the temporary use permit modifications are exempt from secret review based on existing facility and to approve the modification to the TCUP that were discussed by planning and that are up on the board right now.
And I agree to those incorporated statements.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Thank you very much. That concludes our board action items for today. We are adjourned.